Nobody's gonna want to sit in the beginning.
Yeah. Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order. Close session report, Mr. City Attorney.
Recording in progress.
Try that again, there's nothing to report out of close session.
Your voice changed. All right, Sean Gibson, will you lead us in the pledge?
I, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Littler, here. Councilmember Louvenos, here. Councilmember Judge?
Here.
Mayor Protim Kavanaugh?
Here.
And Mayor Mashburn?
Here.
Okay, time for agenda review, are there any items that need to be discussed, looked at, that's on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, we do have a supplemental to agenda item 7C. It is before you tonight with a revised motion on the resolution.
Okay.
I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
Second?
Okay, first and second, we'll call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Declaration of conflict, if any member of the city council may have a conflict of interest or any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should so declare at this time, do we have anybody that has a conflict with anything on the agenda? Okay, saying no, we'll move to 1D.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the first item on the agenda is item 1D1, a proclamation declaring the month of October 2021 as Stop Bullying Month, and Kristin Tignack is here for this presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council. The month of October 2021 is recognized as Stop Bullying Month. This proclamation reads, whereas one out of five, or 20% of Americans, or American students, report being bullied, and whereas multiple research studies have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence, and whereas bullying is physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional harm, or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or group of people, and whereas bullying occurs everywhere, including neighborhoods, schools, workplaces, and online through technology, and whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, behavioral, and learning problems, and are more likely to refrain from participating in schoolwork and attending community events, and whereas it is estimated over 4.5 million students skip school annually due to bullying, and 85% of the time, no one intervenes to help. And whereas everyone's actions matter, and we all have a role to play in creating a world without bullying by uniting for kindness, acceptance, and inclusion, and whereas the Simi Valley Youth Council has identified decreasing bullying as one of its priorities, and will coordinate a citywide Stop Bullying campaign. Now therefore, the month of October 2021 is hereby proclaimed Stop Bullying Month in the city of Simi Valley to reduce the incidence of bullying in the community, presented this 27th day of September 2021.
Thank you, and please relay our appreciation to the youth council for the lead that they're taking in this community and getting the word out and fighting the bullying that is prevalent in our country, unfortunately. So thank them very much for us.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next item on the agenda is item 2, Public Statements on Appointments, Special Presentations, and Informational Reports. And, Mr. Mayor, we have no public speakers for this item this evening.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is item 3A1, Appointment of Two Youth Council Members, and Kristin Tignack will present this item as well.
Good evening, again. The Apollo High School and Hillside Middle School representative positions on the Simi Valley Youth Council have been vacant since July 1st. To achieve full membership on the youth council, a special recruitment was initiated on August 12th, 2021, and concluded on August 27th. A total of four applications were received. On September 10th, an interview committee comprised of three current youth council members conducted interviews and nominated Michelle Sanchez, sorry, Michelle Sanchez and Gracie Kim for the vacant Apollo High School and Hillside Middle School representative positions, respectively. The Youth Council Selection Committee recommends that the city council approve and the mayor appoint Michelle Sanchez and Gracie Kim as the Apollo High School and Hillside Middle School representatives to serve the remainder of the unexpired one-year terms on the Simi Valley Youth Council commencing on September 28th and concluding on June 30th, 2022. This concludes staff's report, and I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of staff?
Mayor, may I make a motion?
Okay.
I move to approve and the mayor appoint Michelle Sanchez and Gracie Kim to the Simi Valley Youth Council as the Apollo High School and Hillside Middle School representatives to serve the remainder of the unexpired one-year term on the Simi Valley Youth Council commencing on September 28th, 2021, and concluding on June 30th, 2022.
A second?
You have a motion and a second, call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
And thank you very much, and thank them for their service.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item 3C1, informational presentation by youth council member Rahul Navin.
Um, all right, so Rahul Navin has been having technical issues getting logged on, his wifi sometimes is a little spotty. So, he actually sent us his presentation by video, so Aaron is going to play that.
Meeting Mayor Mashburn and members of the-
Rahul Navin. There we go.
... city council, thank you for inviting me to speak this evening. My name is Rahul Navin, and I am a senior at Oak Park High School. I am currently serving my third term on the youth council, and I'm honored to be your 2021 to 2022 youth council chair. Tonight, I'm reporting on what took place during our first two meetings of the new term. At our first meeting on August 17th, members introduced themselves with icebreakers and activities to get acquainted with one another. After a year of online Zoom meetings, it was lovely to see everyone in person again. We went on to discuss a number of action items that included coordinating our first prevention awareness campaign and the youth council's participation in a number of upcoming community events. Our first order of business came in tandem with our introduction to the Ronald Reagan Presidential Foundation and Institutes, Meghan Gately and Tyler McAnany, who expressed their gratitude and excitement to work with the youth council in hosting what is one of our most well-received events. We are excited to announce that the 2022 Youth Town Hall is scheduled for January 21st, 2022, and we are glad to be working with the Reagan yet again to make this event possible. As the Reagan's education representatives, Mrs. Gately and Mr. McAnany tasked the youth council with investigating the most pressing issues of concern to youth in and around our community to decide on an event topic. They also let us know that youth council auditions for event moderation and other speaking roles will be held on November 16th, 2021, at the Ronald Reagan Presidential Library and Museum's Presidential Learning Center. We look forward to organizing a successful event with their help. In addition, the youth council will be collaborating with the Simi Valley Public Library on a book-to-action project featuring this year's community reads novel, Rising Strong, by Dr. Brené Brown. Director of the Simi Valley Public Library, Ms. Kelly Beal, explained that the novel addresses the ideas of vulnerability and resilience as our community bands together to overcome the adverse effects of a global pandemic. The youth council has begun reading the novel and will continue to brainstorm ideas regarding options to bring the themes and lessons of the book to an interactive community activity or project. We thank Ms. Beal for her continued support in this endeavor and are glad to embrace an opportunity to bring our community together. At our second meeting held on August 31st, we began planning for our first event of the year that was held this past Thursday, our third annual rock painting night. As part of our yearly suicide prevention campaign, we held the event on the Rose Garden patio at the Simi Valley Public Library on Thursday, September 23rd. We supplied the rocks and all the painting supplies, and our community did the rest. Hundreds of rocks were painted by talented artists of all ages. These rocks created to spread messages of hope and kindness will be hidden in plain sight in public parks throughout the city. If you find one, take a photo and tag us on Instagram at Simi Valley Youth Council to be entered in a random drawing for a gift card. Thank you to everyone that participated. There was a lot of laughter, uplifting music, great vibes, and a whole lot of fun for all. Additionally, youth council members Abhishek Jagannathan, Krish Kothia, and Ian Nelson gave an in-depth presentation on the benefits of the youth council utilizing Discord for communication management. Discord, a popular social media platform among teens, allows users to send messages, video, and voice call with friends, and create servers. The youth council proposes the use of Discord as a streamlined communication platform to encourage and enable community outreach, internal youth council communication, and the possibility of hybrid meetings. We strongly believe that the software will allow the youth council to improve communication, productivity, and outreach for community events, and much more, and will be seeking approval to create and utilize a server for the aforementioned purposes. Finally, I would like to congratulate the following individuals on being elected as this term's youth council officers. Abhishek Jagannathan will be our treasurer. Ella McCrossan will serve as our secretary. Ian Nelson is our sergeant-at-arms. Ashlyn Rowe is our vice chair, and I will be serving as this term's youth council chair. Ian Nelson will also be serving as the youth council representative to the Youth Employment Service Advisory Board. Congratulations to all, and I look forward to working with everyone and the rest of the youth council to accomplish some great things this term. We would like to thank both of our city liaisons, councilmembers Littler and Louvenos. At our meeting, councilmember Littler let us know that our voices are valued by the city council. We are always happy to hear that we are supported in our mission to bring the concerns of our peers to the attention of our city's leaders. Typically, youth council meetings are held the first and third Tuesday of each month during the school year. The next youth council meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 5th, at 4:30 PM. Our meetings are public, so if anyone is interested, I highly encourage you to attend. Please be sure to follow the youth council on Instagram, YouTube, and Facebook at Simi Valley Youth Council for original content and updates about our activities in the community and upcoming events. To conclude, I would like to thank Mayor Mashburn and the city council again for having me here tonight. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. Thank you all, and have a great night.
We'll open up for questions, but uh... Can Rul hear us?
No.
No? He's off. Well, we still want to thank him for his service. Uh, great report, and I was hoping that we could ask a few questions. I'm sure there are council members that are on the youth council board would have some comments, so if at this time you'd like to say anything, please do.
I'd be happy to say, really, I've been so impressed with how they have been creative and risen to the occasion. And they've turned on a dime. Their first meeting was actually held in this adjoining rule room. At the same time, there was a very raucous, um, school board meeting going on at the same time, which you would never have known, because they were so focused and diligent and determined. And then when, of course, this mask mandate came, they've been very diligent, and I know that they separated even further this last meeting at the Cultural Arts Commission Center. But I commend Kristen Tignack and her leadership there, but really, they are excited and going full board. In fact, I don't know how they stand, stay in their timeframe, because they have so many ideas and are so willing to create and do things. So, kudos to them, and it's gonna be a spectacular year.
Councilmember Louvenos?
Uh, you know, I want to congratulate all who were elected to the board, and thank those that have, new members and those that are returning. And, you know, it is a shift. It is a shift for our youth to learn how to socialize again. We've had students that haven't been socializing for, some for two years. So, it's wonderful that the youth council was able to pivot when we had to do everything online. Now they're pivoting back to doing things in person, and then, you know, again, learning to socialize with human beings, again, not on a screen, but face-to-face. So, it's a wonderful thing to do, and Kristin always has wonderful activities for the kids to bond with each other, so... And they've been all very cognizant and aware of all the, you know, safety precautions that we have to keep everyone safe, so... And I'm glad to see that they're doing the bullying, Stop Bullying Month again. Uh, very important again, because there were so many students that when they were online, they felt safer, and now that they're back in person, the bullying isn't issue. So, I'm very glad that they're tackling that again, and that we, as a city, are, you know, making the proclamation as well. So, very proud of them, and we'll be there to support them.
Thank you. Next slide.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item, is the public hearings. This is the time for testimony and public hearings on the consideration of matters as presented on this agenda. Let the record show that due notice was given as required by law, and an affidavit of this effect is on file in the city clerk's office. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the city council and will be made part of the record, however, they will not be read by the city clerk this evening. All persons who register by 3:30 PM today will be called on to speak during the public testimony for item 4, for a period of no more than five minutes each. Persons addressing the city council are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Comments shall be limited to matters relevant to the item on the agenda and may be ruled out of order if comments are unrelated to the item. The reports of the city staff relating to these matters shall be made part of the record of this meeting. If you challenge in court any of the city council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing. The time with judicial review must be sought, is governed by California Code of Civil Procedure, Section 1094.6.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I can jump in, the first public hearing is on the redistricting process for the city Simi Valley. State law requires that we have these hearings at a time certain, allowing for enough time to allow for items that were on the agenda. Prior to this, we missed it by about two minutes. So, what I would encourage the council would just take a two-minute break until 6:50, which is when this is scheduled to start, and then we can start that public hearing, so you can-
Okay, two minutes or a little more?
Yeah, two or three, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll take a two or three-minute break, thank you. We'll call the meeting back to order.
Agenda item 4A, First Public Hearing on the Redistricting Process and to Receive Input from the Public for the Redrawing of Election District Boundaries. Mr. Mayor Mashburn and members of the city council, tonight is the first of four public hearings that the city council is required to have as part of the process in the redrawing of district boundaries. This evening's public hearing is to receive input, public input regarding communities of interest and other local factors that should be considered while drafting district maps. Our consultant from National Demographics Corporation, Kristin Parks, will present an overview of the redistricting process and requirements, the mapping tools that will be forthcoming for the public to use, and a demographic summary of the current council districts based on the 2020 census population data.
Okay, welcome.
Yeah, okay.
There we go.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, members of the council. I'm so happy to be here again with you this evening, and hopefully you will be pleased with what I have to report. This is our first public hearing, so I will be reviewing some of the information that you already heard, but for the benefit of the public, to fully understand the process and the legal requirements. Next slide. So, as we know, Simi Valley very recently adopted districts, and the 2020 census means that even though those districts were so recently drawn for the first time, we do have to review them to ensure compliance with all relevant laws at this time. So, we are now entering into this phase of redistricting, even though the city so recently completed the districting process. Next slide. Here are, is a map of the current four districts, which is important for the public if you are not aware of what district you live in. This is a good time to check that out. Next slide. So, our timeline for redistricting is a little bit compressed, given the delays in the Census Bureau's release of data, but Simi Valley has until April 17th to adopt a new map or adopt the map that will be the boundaries for the next 10 years for council districts. And as required by law, there must be four public hearings prior to adoption of the map. And we have this timeline laid out. We are, of course, here on September 27th, having our first public hearing. And just seven days ago, the state of California released the official statewide adjusted data. Uh, what that is, is our official redistricting data. As NDC is reviewing that data release, we have found a number of errors. It is taking quite a bit of our time to work through it. However, I will be able to give you an updated total population for Simi Valley. And in the coming couple of weeks, we'll have district-level data updates as well, although, as you'll hear in a moment, those updates will be quite small. As Simi Valley, uh, its total population only changed by four people. So, from what I've shown you, my numbers may be off by up to four.
And which direction did we go?
You got four people added, possibly, possibly reallocated state inmates whose last known address was in Simi Valley. But that is quite smaller than many other cities who may be getting, you know, 100 or more. So this is our timeline to get us to the finish line. You should be able to come, to finish this up in January, which would get you ahead of the game, have your boundaries in place for the next decade. Next slide. So for the benefit of the public, it's important for us to review the different levels of laws that govern redistricting. And because redistricting only happens every 10 years, those of us who may even be familiar with these things may have forgotten. So of course, first, we have federal law, which is supreme. And federal law requires that each of the four districts are more or less equal in population size. So we're going to spend a minute this evening discussing population balance. Secondly, we must comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, and we must not dilute the voting power of any protected class of voters, which is why I will be presenting some data on race and ethnicity for voting-age citizens. However, federal law prohibits us from drawing any districts predominantly based on race. So that would be racial gerrymandering, which we will avoid in this process. The state of California has a new law, the Fair Maps Act, that has given cities a rank-ordered list of criteria that must be considered during the redistricting process. These start with a requirement that districts be contiguous. Contiguity is a relatively simple concept, saying that each district must be one whole piece with no separate disconnected pieces. You already have that and will have to maintain that contiguity. The second criterion from the state of California is to minimize the division of neighborhoods and communities of interest. What that means is whenever possible, to avoid drawing a district boundary that would separate a neighborhood or community into different districts. The third criterion is to create easily identifiable boundaries, which you can accomplish by having your district lines follow roads, highways, waterways, or other boundaries that the average resident could identify. Finally, the state says that districts should be compact, meaning when we draw those district boundaries, we don't want to intentionally avoid one area of population so that we can pull in a farther-away area of population. This usually would create strange-shaped districts. Sometimes those strange-shaped districts are, in fact, legally permissible, perhaps if we need to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act. So keeping in mind that the federal law comes first, then California's criteria, California's criteria is rank-ordered. Finally, we won't favor or discriminate against any political parties and, in fact, won't be looking at any data on party registration or partisanship whatsoever. There are other goals that are permissible if they are unique to Simi Valley. We would like to hear them. In general, we also try to make sure that if we're moving district lines and moving voters, we do things like try not to move voters who would normally be voting in 2022 to 2024. We want to give everyone the chance to participate in the political process as expected. And these other goals, again, just like I said, for compactness, to the extent that our other goals do not conflict with federal and state law, we can consider them, but after we have addressed the legal requirements. I know that's a lot for the, the average person, but it is hopefully empowering for the public to know exactly what is guiding this process, and we will refer back to those. So what you see now are the numbers, and these numbers are different from the numbers I showed you the last time that I was here. The presentation that I made previously was based on estimates, estimates that came from the American Community Survey and other projections of population growth for Simi Valley. What you see on this slide are numbers that come from the U.S. Census Bureau's release of data on August 12th. And so these are the final official federal numbers. As I mentioned, the state of California makes an adjustment to those federal numbers to reallocate our state prisoners. And Simi Valley, as a result of that, is the total population has increased to 126,360, so four additional people, whereas on the slide it says 126,356. Obviously, that is going to have very little impact on your total deviation. And thinking back to the federal requirement for these districts to be population-balanced, we're looking for the districts to not have the exact same number of people, but within a reasonable deviation. So taking that total population size, dividing it by four, you're going to get the ideal number of people in each district. And again, that ensures fairness so that each council member represents more or less the same number of residents. Previously, I showed you estimated data that indicated a total deviation of, I think, more than 9%. And so the good news I have for you tonight is that the actual 2020 census data shows that the current districts in Simi Valley look to be relatively population-balanced. You should see, well, you can see that each of the districts, there's some deviation from the ideal, but not very much. And again, the total deviation is calculated by taking the largest district, the, the difference between the largest district and the smallest district. So the differences between the population of District 1 and the population of District 3, and then that as a percentage of the ideal population. So that's where the 3.8% comes from. It puts you in a very good position because if you have a large population deviation, some of your district lines are going to have to move to balance out that population. So from NDC's perspective, it looks like Simi Valley has already achieved a population balance that we would be comfortable moving forward with. So, next slide. We still have to go through the process as required by state law, meaning that we will have to still consider the ranked criteria under the Fair Maps Act. And one of those criteria is not to divide communities of interest. And so NDC has prepared some maps that show different demographic information that may or may not be helpful in identifying communities of interest. And we've also are holding this first public hearing to invite the public to participate in this process by sharing any perspectives that they have about the current district boundaries or communities of interest. So this slide is simply a heat map showing where Latino citizens of voting age are located in Simi Valley. And the heat map, of course, goes from cold, so the purples and blues, to warm or hot, the yellows and reds. Next slide. So you can also see where we have multifamily housing in Simi Valley. So this is not necessarily, I could also show you renters versus homeowners, which is slightly different, but this is single-family homes versus multifamily housing. So this is really more of a, of a sort of housing density measure, same heat map. Next slide. Then we can also look at families that have children at home. So what percentage of each census block where, where there may be children under 18 in the household? So if you are looking at making small adjustments to the maps, NDC can provide the city with a number of demographic data points to help identify communities. And the reason for that is that we think of a district as being a group of communities and neighborhoods. So when we are looking at those lines and just reviewing them, we're thinking about, okay, well, in each district, which neighborhoods and communities make sense to be grouped together? Are there some that are, you know, different and would make sense to have a district line between them? And which ones are more similar? Next slide. So communities of interest is a term that is, I think, unique to redistricting. It's, the general public will be familiar with the concept of neighborhoods and what neighborhood they live in. A community of interest is actually defined in our state elections code as a population that has shared social or economic interests and would benefit from being within one single district so that they would have a chance to be effectively represented on the city council. Next slide. So there's many ways to, for the, for the public to identify a community of interest, and NDC is not really ever going to come into a community and say, here's what your communities of interest are. We rely on the council and the public to identify those communities. And we often say there's no wrong answer, there's no wrong way to describe your community. So we do hope that we will receive comments from the public throughout this process as we approach that deadline next year, so that we can hear what, what the priorities are and what the public thinks that, that the district should, what the priorities are for those districts. Next slide. Okay. So as part of this process, to ensure transparency and to empower the public to participate in that way, NDC does offer mapping tools. And at our next meeting, which will be a workshop in October, NDC will be introducing a paper map that members of the public can draw their ideal districts on, as well as an online mapping tool. These will be launched in advance of that, of that workshop. And then at the workshop, I will be demoing how to use those tools, which will be very useful. And so I know we do not have any members of the public that signed up to provide their public comment on this, but I still want to invite the public to go to the website or email the council and let us know what your feedback is or what, what your priorities are for redistricting. And we want to enter that into the public record as part of this process. Going forward, NDC may, may decide to, to craft a memo for the city that, that gives you our, once we do work through that final data release, and of course, look at where those four people belong, we'll be able to say, it's NDC's likely recommendation that the current district boundaries will, will go through the Fair Maps Act criteria and, 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 you know, pop, will probably make a recommendation that if you want to consider the current district boundaries and re-adopt them for the next 10 years, that may be what NDC recommends. And in fact, that's what I expect us to do. That does not preclude you or the public from considering other adjustments. It just gives us, I think, an easier starting point for the process. So I will end there. I am sweating under my mask because when you, when you have to give a presentation in a mask, it's like, you, you just are breathing so heavy, it's ridiculous. But again, members of the public should absolutely check out the website, redistrictsimivalley.org. There's a lot of good information there. A lot of what I covered in the presentation is on the website. And there's also, again, an opportunity for the public to weigh in by sending emails and, of course, participating in future meetings. So I'm happy to take questions at this time.
Okay, do we have questions? Councilmember Lou Ebanos.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I have a question. You talked about the criteria, including anticipating future growth. Does that include housing developments?
It does, but generally only if there's like something huge coming down and you may want to allow for, you know, like a 1% deviation difference based on that. Keeping in mind that we are legally required to use 2020 population data for the redistricting. So it's sort of one of those like in-your-back-pocket if it was something really big, but I, I think that's probably unlikely for Simi Valley.
Well, because, and I'm asking because we do have some higher-density developments that are going to be, you know, that they're already planned, they're already being built within the next, you know, year or so. So we're talking about, you know, apartment complexes and, you know, townhome complexes where there's going to be, you know, probably a shift in the population from where we've typically had higher-density developments. So the higher-density developments are being spread out throughout the city from what we see that is coming up. And so where you see a higher density in, in certain areas right now, and when these districts were decided in 2018, at the end of that, we are seeing a shift, you know, for the, for the near future. So I'm curious, if we decide on the boundaries and, let's say, in, you know, in a year, you know, and there's a, a big density shift due to these developments and the, the deviation is more than 3.8% and 6% or 7%, but we've already voted, would we be considered out of compliance or?
No, not at all.
Okay. So if, whatever we vote on, if in 10 years it's completely out of whack, then we're, we're not liable for that and that's okay. Can we choose to change the redistricting with, before that 10-year period expires or is it just set in stone?
You, you, I will defer again to the city attorney, but you are only required to redistrict every 10 years. I am not aware of any city that has chosen to make a change, I mean, maybe, but has chosen to in the interim.
But it is based on population, I just wanted to, because there are a lot of people that are like, it's, well, but this land is bigger. And so I just wanted you to explain that again because there just seems to be so much confusion.
It's important. It's important to understand that what we're talking about is census data for 2020, and the Census Bureau is actually looking at a specific day when you fill out the census. It's where did you reside on this specific day in 2020? And they are counting everyone, right? So it's also helpful to remember that this is not just about registered voters or people over 18 or U.S. citizens. The census counts everyone, and we are required by law to use those numbers that come from the 2020 census.
Okay. But if, if, again, if there was a shift, you know, somehow developments are happening in different parts, then the city could redistrict if it so chose to.
I don't, I don't think so. You'd have to come back in 2030 with new district numbers to make an evaluation then. So the consultant has indicated we're going to have to rely on the 2020 numbers.
I'll, I'll be happy if you want to bring me back in 2031. And you have wildly, you know, deviant districts, I'll, I'll be happy to walk you through that process. That being said, it's, it's, we're seeing some cities in California that haven't had huge changes. And whether or not that's true from what you know of your city or whether that's just what the data show, we do have or whether that's just what the data show, we do have to use the census data.
And I bring it up again because I know for a fact that there were some people, because there was confusion about whether or not there would be a citizenship question on the census and it was polled eventually. But there was just a very, there was a lack of communication and miscommunication and disinformation about whether or not that, that question would be included. So we know for a fact, you know, talking to Naleo and Lulac, other, you know, a lot of Latino organizations that have said that, you know, these numbers are skewed and they're not necessarily authentic or accurate. But that's what we're stuck with.
It is. And I'm glad that you point that out because sometimes that's a question that we get is, well, can, can we fix the census numbers? We can't. No.
So I, I think what we're getting down to is the importance of the census. And because it will be used, uh, in situations like this and we cannot change that process. So move on to the next, uh, question from Elaine Lister.
Thank you. Just a quick question. Um, you talked about minimizing the number of voters delayed from 2022 to 2024. And I'm very mindful that half of the city did not get to vote in 2020. So if I'm understanding, and it would be very frustrating if they didn't get to vote once again. So if I'm understanding your recommendation, you're suggesting that we do all that we can to not take numbers away from District Two and Four because those are the districts that did not get to vote yet. So if anything, we need to adjust somewhere in One and Three, but we, but Two and Four, we do all we can not to minimize or take people away from. Is that accurate to say?
Correct. Or to minimize the number of people that we, that would have to be in that unfortunate position, right? Sometimes it has to happen.
Right. And I just wanted me to re-articulate that because I think that would be very frustrating for someone.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Lou Evinus.
I just wanted to reiterate, and I know we're gonna have more hearings, but that we still elect our mayor at large. So everyone will, will still get to vote for the mayor regardless of whether or not they got to vote. So if, if by any chance, you know, people get, and some people will just move and they just won't get to vote because they moved to a different district that, you know, now doesn't get to vote. So, and that's nothing that we can control if someone moves to a different part of the city. But just want to reiterate that everyone will get to vote for the mayor because it's an at-large election, so everyone gets to vote for the mayor every two years. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions of staff? Okay, uh, again, wanted to, uh, verify there's no public comments.
Mr. Mayor, we have no public speakers for this item.
Okay. Okay, so we'll close the hearing at this time. We've already made our comments or questions. I guess let's go with comments from the council. Okay, we'll move on. We'll entertain a mo, okay, back up to, uh, Councilmember Lou Evinus.
Yes, uh, I just want to encourage everyone, please participate in this process. Despite what you heard tonight, you, you have a say, your opinion matters. Encourage everyone to be involved in this, uh, process. And, and, you know, talk about your communities of interest, talk about your neighborhood, talk about, there has been a shift, yes. Even in the past couple of years, there has been a shift. So, uh, please come and participate. This is your local government, so it's only as strong as whatever it is that you put into it. So please make sure that you participate. And there will be three more hearings, uh, for you to be able to hear about it. And you can ask for all these different layers of, you know, housing and ethnicity and, you know, those, all those things will be presented to you. So even if you just like to see data and numbers, right, on what the output is from the 2020 census, I encourage you all to please participate. And there will be Spanish translators if there are people that need translation. Is that correct?
That will be available, yes.
Okay. Uh, and Mayor, I'd like to, oh, I don't know if there's any more comments, but I'll make a motion whenever you're ready.
Uh, this is just a receiving file.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so no motions needed and we will proceed to the next item.
Agenda item four B, a public hearing to consider city-initiated Simi Valley Municipal Code amendments Z dash S dash twenty twenty-one dash zero 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 six, to revise portions of Title Nine to establish regulations for outdoor dining standards for restaurants pertaining to setbacks, landscaping and mar, and parking requirements, a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environment Quality Act, introduction of an ordinance and adoption of a resolution. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance number one three two seven, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley for Z dash S dash twenty twenty-one dash zero 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 six, amending portions of Title Nine of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to establish regulations for outdoor dining standards for restaurants and a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environment Quality Act SEQA. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley approving the outdoor dining, dining design guidelines. And Sean Gibson and Claudia Pedrosa are here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashur, members of the City Council. This is our proposed amendments to the outdoor dining ordinance to increase opportunities to expand outdoor dining areas as related to, um, the experience of, uh, the dining with the COVID situation. So our principal planner, Claudia Pedrosa, is here, as well as our associate planner, Naru Guanis the heckhaker. And you can, you can begin the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. On June twenty-first of this year, the City Council requested that staff develop code amendments to encourage outdoor dining areas for restaurants and bring these in front of the council. Given COVID nineteen's devastating impact on the restaurant industry countrywide, with the loss of two point five million jobs and two hundred and forty billion dollars in sales, the outdoor dining regulations were developed with the aim of encouraging existing restaurants to expand their current facilities and also attract new restaurants to the city by providing more flexibility for outdoor dining facilities. Under the COVID nineteen emergency orders, the city has issued twenty-nine COVID TUPs, temporary use permits and expanded, for expanded outdoor dining areas. Over twenty percent of the restaurants with expanded outdoor dining areas have spent over ten thousand dollars in improvements. And eighty-nine percent of these restaurants want to convert these temporary spaces into permanent spaces. Outdoor dining areas are forecast to play an important role in restaurant recovery. An OpenTable's latest diner survey indicates that eighty-two percent of diners want restaurants to continue to increase outdoor seating. Outdoor dining areas can be unroofed as shown on the left, sorry, can be, uh, unroofed as shown on the left or roofed as shown on the right. Currently, outdoor dining areas require either modifications to existing plan development permits or administrative actions. With the proposed changes, roofed outdoor areas and unroofed outdoor areas will have different permitting requirements. Outdoor dining areas will be permitted in all commercial and industrial zones. Roofed areas less than one thousand five hundred square feet and unroofed areas of any size will be allowed with a zoning clearance as long as they're not within fifty feet of a residential zone or in a mixed-use overlay. Note that in the staff report, there is an error on page twenty-three which states that a requirement of being, which states a requirement of being two hundred and fifty feet outside of residential zones for a zoning clearance, when in fact, this requirement is fifty feet. For dining areas that are within mixed-use zones with roofed dining greater than, sorry, between one thousand five hundred and three thousand square feet or within fifty feet of a residential zone, an administrative action with a public hearing will be required to ensure that the public interest will be preserved and any potential noise impacts are mitigated. In all cases, parking requirements will need to be met and architectural review for any structures and modifications or landscaping will be required. Note that for roofed, roofed outdoor dining areas greater than three thousand square feet in size, a conditional use permit will be required. Also, there are no changes proposed to the conditional use permit requirement for amplified music within two hundred and fifty feet of a residential zone. Currently, no encroachments into setback or landscape areas are permitted. With the proposed changes, outdoor dining areas would be allowed to encroach by fifty percent into required setback areas, landscape islands adjacent to parking, and the ten-foot landscaping strip required adjacent to public streets. For the latter two scenarios, the encroachment would only be allowed for uncovered outdoor seating where temporary seating with umbrellas would be allowed. For covered and uncovered dining areas, architectural enhancements such as landscape planters and decorative fencing and paving would be required to allow these encroachments. A number of modifications to parking space requirements are being proposed to allow more flexibility for restaurants. Parking requirements would, will be reduced from one space per hundred and twenty-five square feet of gross square footage instead of the current one per one hundred square feet. The existing allowance for outdoor dining areas without required, requiring parking, which currently ranges from fifteen to thirty percent of the existing restaurant space, will increase to fifty percent. Shared and alternative house parking will be allowed, parking on lots up to three hundred feet away. Valet and tandem parking will be allowed with the director's review and approval. The ten percent allowance for restaurants within shopping centers to be parked at one space per two hundred and fifty square feet will be increased to twenty percent. Uh, for the proposed general standards and the design guidelines, I'm gonna hand over to Claudia.
Good evening. Uh, so the proposed general standard for outdoor dining areas as shown over here will ensure the protection of the public and maintenance of aesthetics in, in range of form requiring provisions of adequate pedestrian access, maintaining the areas in a clean and safe condition, and prohibiting any signs or advertising on any fencing or railing. The outdoor design guidelines are supplemental to the proposed code amendment. The intent is to provide architectural and landscape design guidelines in order to promote high dense design quality so that they can promote social gathering areas, providing a vibrant streetscape, thus promoting growth of, of existing restaurants, bringing new restaurants, thus supporting job and economic growth. The guidelines allow for different locations where the outdoor dining can be installed, like in parking lots, walkways, landscape areas, within setbacks, et cetera. In response to these allowances, applicants will be, will provide enhanced landscaping and architectural features. They also have to be accessible and provide safety for diners by providing buffers and proper electrical connections. These guidelines would also include the type of platform design, if there's one provided, as well as the allowed materials and colors such as wood siding, wrought iron fencing, planters, and colors complementary to the adjacent building, as well as also providing the disallowed materials and colors such as unfinished plywood, corrugated metal, or bright colors that do not complement the surrounding area. The furniture and furnitures, and furnishings are to remain movable so they can safely be put indoors or properly secure after business hours. Also, the furniture and furnishings have to complement the design theme of the outdoor dining area and restaurants. Amendments will be very important as they can create pleasant ambiances for the outdoor dining areas. Comfortable seating, lighting, fire pits, even bicycle ride parking are amendments that will promote local residents to gather in these areas.
It is recommended that the City Council introduce an ordinance approving Z dash S dash two thousand twenty-one dash zero 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 six to amend portions of Title Nine of the Simi Valley Municipal Code to establish regulations for outdoor dining standards for restaurants and adopt a resolution approving the outdoor dining design guidelines. As mentioned previously, the ordinance to be approved corrects the error on page twenty-three of the staff report where the requirement for being two hundred and fifty feet outside of residential zones for a zoning clearance is actually fifty feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with, uh, questions of staff and wow. We have Ruth and Elaine that want to ask some questions. So we'll start with, uh, Councilmember Lou Evinus.
Here's my first question. Thank you, Mayor. In the guidelines, you state that, um, they are to provide a legal and safe pedestrian path from the parking space to the nearest entrance. That was in the, I'm sorry, I don't know what page it is. I just wrote my notes on here. What, what does that look like exactly? Because that's been one of my concerns, uh, with the outdoor seating. And I think it's great and I'm all for this ordinance, but I just want to make sure that there's safety measures involved. So what does, with, how is legal and safe pedestrian path defined? Does that mean that there's, you know, uh, signs or there's, you know, painted pathways on the, you know, from the, from where they're parking to where they're going? I just want to make sure that people are safe.
Yes, uh, thank you for that question. So any path of travel, we have to be accessible. And when you, when we talked about legal and safe, it has to be, uh, you know, sidewalk or walkway that is in good condition, that it meets the Title Twenty-four requirements, uh, as far as slope and everything. And also when it's crossing a, uh, a traffic airway that is, uh, that is adequately signed and also noted on like on the path with the striping and what have you. So that's what we mean by a legal and, and, uh, safe, uh, walkway or a passage to get to the place.
And who would be required to provide that? The restaurant owner or the owner of the property? Or I'm just curious, who, where, who does that fall with, that responsibility?
It, it depends on the arrangement that the tenant will have with the property, property owner, you know, in the finished shopping center. A lot of times usually when it's a common area, it's the property owner that takes care of it. A lot of the times also, depending on the, how the lease agreement works and what contract they have, it will be the, the applicant's responsibility to do the improvements. Nevertheless, they will, whoever does it, it still has to meet requirement, the Title Twenty-four requirements and building code requirements, it still be inspected the same. And that makes sure that they are in compliance.
Okay, because, you know, the, the purpose of this is to help our restaurant owners that have been hit so hard by COVID. But, you know, I don't know if this means if, if the common areas are taken over by the, are taken care of by the property owners, if the property owners, you know, are now gonna raise the rent, you know, now you're, you know, you're having this outdoor space, I'm gonna raise the rent on you. So I'm curious if anybody from staff talked to any of the property owners.
Well, but just usually you have different ways of leasing, uh, the space. You can go by, you know, the net, uh, triple net or what have you, and some of it is based on sales. So just by design of the, whatever contract they have, they potentially would be increased leases just because of the fact that the sales will increase. But in addition to that, they also, also leasing additional, uh, area, a larger area, and that it's actually going into the common play, common space. Just because it's not part of the buildings does not mean that the, the property owner would not be able to get a lease payment based on that. But that's again, between the, the restaurant owner and the property owner for them to decide, uh, what kind of pricing or what lease, the cost of the lease is gonna be.
Okay, so city staff is not gonna get involved in that. That's just gonna be something they're, they're gonna have to figure out between them how to do it. And then we're gonna go, the city's gonna go and inspect to make sure.
Correct.
Needs those regulations. Is that correct?
We don't get involved now, we wouldn't get involved after.
If I maybe could help here, it's, it would be the, the rule of the city to have these things, but it would be a determination between the, uh, landowner and the tenant to determine who's gonna pay for it.
Okay.
And what the city's just saying, it has to be done. They don't care who does it. They just, it has to be done. And that, that's a contractual agreement between the tenant and the, uh, property owner. Am I correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, and, uh, if I may, Mayor, the same question, just expounding on it. For legal and safe pedestrian path, um, what does safe look like? We have seen, you know, in California and around the country, we have seen people that have, you know, does that mean barriers? Does that mean pylons? Does that mean, uh, you know, um, you know, in Ventura County, they have to have, you know, these heavy planters around there and these, you know, wooden barriers. So there are things that if, if a, if a car in the parking lot, because where I've seen most of these outdoor spaces has been in parking lots, right? That are adjacent to the restaurant where the, the outdoor spaces have been. And that's my concern. My concern is with regard to safety. You know, what kind of barriers are they gonna be? Is it gonna be something more permanent or heavy or more of a, a safety barrier for people that are dining outside to make sure they're safe?
So you're talking about the actual outdoor dining area if it's placed in a, let's say on a traffic way, how would it be protected? So yes, we do have requirements for them to be, for one thing, they have to maintain a clear path, uh, clear, clear, uh, drive aisle for the cars, so they cannot encumber that area. We're gonna ask them to go in a little bit so they're not at the edge. And they are supposed to provide some type of fencing material. And there's different ways they can do it, uh, even with, uh, bigger, uh, planters. So they could be, uh, wood fencing, even if it's wrought iron, it's gonna have to have some supports that will make it, uh, will make a, more support. And, uh, that alone will provide, for one thing, an eye. for the, for a driver to see better where the look, you know, the dining area is, but also will keep a distance between the car, the cars and the dining area. But yeah, the intent is to keep it safe by providing an enclosure that is going to be substantial, not just, well, you see right now temporarily, sometimes you just have some construction fencing. That's not going to be the case. It's going to be something built out.
Is there a requirement for lighting on that barrier for, you know, for nighttime, so that people, you know, drivers can see where the barriers are?
We don't have specifically a requirement for lighting on that. However, most of these places are going to have lighting just for the, the customers to be able to have, be able to see at night. So that alone is going to define the area. But we don't have per se to put like some red, you know, lights or something around the.
No, just lighting. So my concern is this, there may be lighting for the customers, you know, so they can read the menu. But there's also restaurants that, you know, they want to have a romantic ambiance and it's not a lot of lighting. I'm concerned about lighting for the barrier at night because, and I'm, I'm not going to give the specific name of the restaurant, but I know that there, I've seen restaurants where they're adjacent to say a bank with an ATM drive through, you know? And there's no lighting on the barrier that's on the outside. There's lighting for the diners that are at the tables, but not in the outside. And, you know, and there's other businesses, you know, banks and stuff nearby in the same parking lot. Does that make sense? So my concern is, you know, is there lighting or reflectors or something so that people at night, when they're driving, you know, not for the diners, but for the drivers. Does that make sense?
Yes, it makes sense.
And I think the city manager looks like he's.
When a, when a development is done, they have to submit a photometric plan which shows the lighting in the parking lot as well as around the site, which is a minimum of one foot candle, if I remember correctly. That doesn't change. So if anything changes, there'll be more lighting for the patrons that are sitting at the restaurant, outdoor dining, but it won't be reduced at all. So the parking, the parking lot lighting that is there will, will still remain. It does not diminish the amount of parking that is there. If there are, and there's not a whole lot, but if, if there is an outdoor dining that is adjacent to a parking lot, that park, that, that is well lit now and it will remain well lit. And if, if there are additional barriers that need to be installed, they will be there too. But the, the lighting is not being diminished from what we have today in, in the drive aisle areas.
Okay.
And I can add on ATM, we're required to have even additional lighting. So any, anytime there's an ATM, we have specific lighting that the police department requires and that the FDIC requires, so additional lighting.
Yeah. My next question, if I may, Mayor, one more question. I'm concerned about the liability for the valet program. I saw that that was in there, you know, that they can have valet parking. So is that something that the, we would require the restaurant to have, or is that built into the restaurant insurance for valet parking?
It's strictly a, a property owner, business owner decision. If they want to provide valet, that's, that's up to them.
But the city would have no liability?
We're providing the option, option for them.
Okay, but we're, we're not involved with that legally?
No.
Perfect. Thank you.
Hey, Councilmember Lipter.
Thank you, Mayor. My questions really are more, are questions of design, just, just some of the standards, et cetera. So maybe Claudia, it might be for you, but we can, we can talk about this. First of all, you've given figures that about, in the Cypress initiation, that 89% of our current would like to, to convert to permanent. So my question first of all is, are we going to go back and reevaluate all of those temporary structures that are in place right now, or are they grandfathered in?
I think we'll have to reevaluate. There are some that would not comply.
That's what I wondered, because I noticed some that didn't seem to fit this, and I wondered whether.
We're, we recognize the investment that restaurants have made up to this date.
Sure.
Some of them don't come close to complying. Some of them are close and that some would need some adjustments. Others would probably be, we could, if, if they meet the intent, I think we'd try and work with them to let them keep the improvements that they've done to the best we can. Or give them a, a timeframe to bring them up to a certain standard.
Okay, and so then maybe that goes to the next, thank you. That goes to my next question. In, in the documentation, for instance, it says chain link fencing would be prohibited. Although it's not necessarily spelled out in the design, it says there's director's discretion. But then later on, as I read through, it gives some, some guidance. Is it, is it articulated that clearly that there will not be chain link fencing? And then a follow-up to that, for instance, what about, I noticed the use of concrete barrier that looked similar to what you find in the middle of the freeway. Are those kind of elements going to be written in as not appropriate? Or what is, what, what is expressly articulated, or is it just open-ended?
It's not open-ended. The guidelines are, are a little bit more open to be able to accommodate different designs. You know, we establish more of the relationship of, to the building that is adjacent to, to the restaurant that it serves. And it may be like, you know, like right now, you mentioned the, the concrete, you know, bollard. It may, it may sound pretty bad right now, but maybe if you look at it in the composition and the design is, is together with the building, maybe it makes sense. So basically, we're just saying, we're not gonna, we're not going to allow materials that would not be compatible or would not make the place look better. Those are going to be discouraged. So, but we're going to promote good design and better materials. So a chain link fence is one that we wouldn't want to use, but if somebody comes in with something like that, but they're going to grow vines on it, or they're going to put some other kind of slats on it or what have you, it may work. But we're giving a little bit of the freedom to come with the design again, like a city manager mentioned, is that also we're trying to work with this, the expenditure they've done already.
Fair enough, fair enough. Can I just ask you quickly, on page 19 of the report, there was just something I wondered if that needed to be finalized. There was a question mark. Exactly. In item two, this is of part two, it says, "The area may be paved with decorative pavers and utilized for outdoor dining with removable and in parentheses or not a fixed question mark," seating and shade covers. Is that? Is that intended to be a question?
No, I think it was a question to ourselves and it was a typo, so we would make sure that we'll clean that up for the final.
Okay, I just, okay, I, thank you.
We're pointing this out from the report together and left the question then there to address.
I, I figured as much, and if this is the official ordinance, I want to be sure it gets removed. Let me just put that.
Thank you for pointing it out.
If that's all right.
Legal wants to thank you for pointing that out.
That's, that's all right. So, and I guess that kind of speaks then to, just going finally back to what, what we were just discussing. So, parts one and two don't mention the design elements. I guess, should some of the things you've articulated be spelled out in part four, or are we comfortable that it's left to be open-ended as you've discussed? That's, that's my final question, whether you think that. I mean, there just seems that there's a lot of director discretion, and maybe that's wonderful, because it allows you to really look at each property individually. But I wonder if we should articulate specifically, there will not be certain things like barbed wire fencing or whatever.
The design guideline concept adds flexibility to what we're approving. Rather than revising a complete ordinance, the guidelines can be amended from time to time by the director as, as it is rented. When you put it into an ordinance, that'll be it. You'd have to change the ordinance if you want to change something in the future. But if you don't want to specifically, if you don't want purple lights at all, then you put that into code, then that can never be a guideline.
Gotcha. Okay, fair enough. Well, thank you. Appreciate your, your information.
Okay. Councilmember Judge, you have any comments? Mayor Protem Kavina.
I just wanted to thank them for, the planning department for coming back with these guidelines like we had requested of you, so thank you very much.
I have a, well, first, we'll go back to Councilmember Lou Evinus.
Sorry, Mayor, I have one more question. On page 19 and 20, it talks about tandem parking not being allowed at the bottom of page 20 under part three. But then it states under, on page 20, it says that tandem parking is allowed for valet service under the direction of a, the director of a valet parking management plan. Would that be within shared spaces, or that would mean that they would, you know, what if it's a shared space where there's multiple businesses? I'm just trying to figure out how that would work, or they would, the property manager would have to figure out where that tandem parking would take place, or how does, can you, I'm trying to figure out the logistics of that.
So the logistics will be that if a restaurant needs to have valet parking in order to meet the parking demand, they will come to the city with a valet parking program that is going to show us where they're going to park, how many spaces they're taking, the hours of operation, where you do pickup, drop off, and so on and so forth, and the director will have to approve that plan. So we get involved in the approval of the plan, we just don't get involved in the whatever negotiations are between the tenant and the property owner.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the report and all the work. I, I envisioned, I, I know it was early on that the city manager and I was talking about doing something to help the restaurant owners, and you guys have gone far above anything I expected. And I mean that in a very good sense, so thank you for the thoroughness. A question for you, and if, if you don't have the answer, I'm plenty good with, I don't know. But I see a lot of this as being administrative. Do you have any idea the, the amount of permit process that'll be across the counter versus having to come all the way to the council?
Well, probably none of them would come to the city council, and only if you're over 10,000 square feet would you have a planning commission hearing, so it'd be a very large outdoor dining area. So all of it would be an administrative conditional use permit at most. And a lot of those would be an administrative action for anything under 3,000 square feet. So very few, if any, would come to the planning commission or the council.
Okay, that, that answers my question. Thank you, because I personally think something like this, that's where it should be handled. And with you, the folks that are the experts on it, so. And then there'd be a lot less time spent, so when somebody wants to do an outdoor dining area, they can get it done quickly. And there again, we're assisting them instead of slowing the process down, so thank you for that. I think too, I, as I drive by these places, I, you sometimes think, oh boy, you're awful close. But then again, when you drive down the street, you're awful close to a sidewalk. And we don't put special lights on sidewalks, and we don't put bollards on sidewalks. And so that's why it takes people like you to make these decisions. And again, that's my opinion, because there's a lot that we could read into it. We could go over it, kill it, and it would look like a big, some kind of prison or something. And that's definitely not what we're after. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion?
Yes, you may. Thank you.
I move to introduce ordinance number 1327, approving zone text amendment Z dash S dash 2021 dash 0006 to amend portions of Title IX of the Simi Valley Municipal Code related to regulations for outdoor dining standards for restaurants, a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and adopt resolution number 2021 dash 36 regarding the outdoor dining design guidelines.
As amended to correct the error.
As amended to correct the error.
I'll second.
And Mr. and Mr. Mayor, just for the record, were there any public hearing speakers tonight?
Oh, thank you.
I apologize. No, we have no public speakers for this item this evening.
Thank you, Sean. I appreciate it. Okay, with that, we have a motion and a second. We'll call for the vote. Let me, let me verify one thing. Councilmember Lou Evinus, I didn't take your name off, or you didn't want? Okay, thank you. Whoops, now we have Councilmember Lipter. Did you want to say?
No, I just, I just wanted to make it clear, I ask questions, but I want to make it clear that we are, I think, I am personally excited that you're doing this. I just wanted to make that statement, that I do think it was done initially for COVID and safety, but the net result is it made Simi Valley more inviting, more exciting place to dine, and I think ultimately is a wonderful addition to our community beyond the safety that it, dining that it provided. So I just, I guess, wanted to lend that voice and say thank you.
Yes, staff. Staff is very excited too. If you, if you notice the, with the parking amendments we've doing, it opens up a lot of opportunities to increase restaurants in the areas. This is a multiple effect that would be occurring.
Okay, now we're going to call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Next item, agenda item C. A public hearing to consider city initiated Simi Valley Municipal Code amendments Z dash S dash 745 to revise portions of Title IX amendments to the West End specific plan SP dash S dash seven. Amendment number 29, SP dash S dash 2021 dash 0001. And Brandeis Bardine Institute specific plan SP dash S dash nine. Amendment number seven, SP dash S dash 2021 dash 002 to modify regulations for operating alcoholic beverage manufacturing facilities, breweries, microbreweries, wineries, and distilleries. A determination that the amendments are exempt from the, are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA and introduction of an ordinance. The reading of the ordinance is as follows. Ordinance number 1328, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley for Z dash S dash 745, amending portions of Title IX of the Simi Valley Municipal Code and amendments to the West End specific plan SP dash S dash seven. Amendment number 29, SP dash S dash 2021 dash 001. And Brandeis Bardine Institute specific plan SP dash S dash nine. Amendment number seven, SP dash S dash 2021 dash 0002 to modify regulations for operating alcoholic beverage manufacturing facilities, breweries, microbreweries, wineries, and distilleries, and to provide options for onsite tasting and retail sales. And a determination that the amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA. And Jennifer, and Sean Gibson and Jennifer Santos are here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn. Again, Claudia Pedrosa, our principal planners here this evening, but doing the presentation will be senior planner Jennifer Santos.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Due to the popularity of alcohol beverage manufacturing facilities, which are also known as breweries, distilleries, and wineries, the city council directed staff to research the possibilities of amending the Simi Valley Municipal Code of January in 2019 to allow these types of facilities within industrial areas of the city. Upon conducting the research to draft the ordinance, staff researched the different cities of Ventura County and others outside the county. It was found that these types of businesses are primarily located in industrial zones. In addition to manufacturing of these alcoholic beverages, other activities include product tasting and retail sales. Associated events with these types of businesses include wine pairings or beverage pairings of that product that's being manufactured, food trucks, music, and occasional weddings and other events. After researching the different jurisdictions, staff presented to the neighborhood councils to receive input from the community. All four executive boards favored allowing alcohol beverage manufacturing within industrial areas of the city. They also recommended to consider decreasing or eliminating the 250-foot separations from sensitive areas, which include residential areas, churches, hospitals, and schools. However, this requirement is more specific to, the requirement of the 250-foot distance is more, more specific to bars, pubs, and other types of, in taverns. After receiving input from the neighborhood councils, staff drafted the ordinance and presented it to the planning commission in June, in which the planning commission supported the ordinance and recommended its approval. Many of these facilities are located in industrial buildings to provide ample space for the related manufacturing equipment and storage. Some amendments would include a category for alcohol beverage manufacturing to establish permit standards for the business operations, including product tastings and associated sales, and to establish parking standards for these businesses. Before going into the proposed ordinance, this map depicts the areas, industrial areas of the city. The areas shown in purple and lavender, both in these circled areas. The areas shown in purple and lavender, both in these circled areas, are the main industrial areas within the city, which also include the specific plan areas that are also being proposed for amendments tonight. This area over here is the West End specific plan. And this area over here is a Brandeis Bardine Institute specific plan, which is near Tapo Kenny Road and south of LA Avenue. And the West End specific plan is west of Madera, this area here, and First Street, too. This table shows a matrix of what types of businesses are allowed within the city in the different zones. This is, the text that's shown in black, which is down here, are the existing businesses. Up here are the different zoning districts within the city. And what we're proposing to do is focus on the industrial areas, which is light industrial, general industrial, and business park, and also commercial industrial. The blue areas are the new categories that we're referencing for the alcohol beverage manufacturing. Currently, the code allows microbreweries under drinking places, which is mentioned as referenced as bars and pubs. The new category would allow the alcohol beverage manufacturing. If the category were to only offer manufacturing without any incidental tastings or retail services, we would, the matrix would allow, would permit them within these areas. For the facilities that allow the tastings that you normally find within microbreweries and wineries, we would require a conditional use permit. Additionally, many of these types of facilities or jurisdictions have tasting rooms, which we would allow the tasting facilities with a conditional use permit in the, more in the commercial areas, not so much in the industrial areas, because this is more geared towards retail sales, not manufacturing. Additionally, the conditional use permit would be processed with an administrative, it would be processed administratively if it's under 10,000 square feet. Currently, the code does not provide parking for alcoholic beverage manufacturing. Upon researching the different jurisdictions, the recommended parking requirements would be more in line with the City of Temecula, where the parking is specific to the use within the facility. By separating manufacturing and storage from the retail sale, retail and tasting uses, as shown, manufacturing would allow one space per 500 square feet for manufacturing, and the tasting eating area would be calculated at one space per 250 square feet, which is more in line with a retail store. No parking will be required if the outdoor area doesn't exceed 25% of the facility for the tasting area. The planning commission recommended no additional parking if the tasting area did not exceed 25% of the total area of the facility. However, since the planning commission meeting, staff was directed to provide the standards for outdoor dining, City Council may want to consider approving an option, which is option two in the report, to allow additional parking if the tasting area does not exceed 50%, which would be consistent with the outdoor dining ordinance. Many jurisdictions provide alternative parking standards for these types of businesses as well. Since parking within industrial areas is more limited to manufacturing uses, the parking is more limited. These types of options can be done by allowing shared parking arrangements with other properties near the facility in order to meet the parking requirements. And these alternatives could be done by either reciprocal parking agreements for properties that are within 500 feet of the facility, shared parking with the properties that have alternative business hours, and through valet parking. Both, as mentioned, the West End specific plan and the Brandeis Bardine specific plan will also be amended to include the categories for alcohol beverage manufacturing, and also be in line with the operation standards, to be consistent with the code. It is recommended that the City Council introduce the ordinance to approve Z S dash 745 that will revise portions of Title IX and amendments to the West End specific plan and the Brandeis Bardine Institute specific plan that will modify the regulations to allow alcohol beverage manufacturing businesses, such as breweries, and, as mentioned, wineries and distilleries, and to provide options to provide product tasting and associated retail sales, or as recommended by the planning commission, or option two as recommended by staff. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Hi, I just wanted to double check with you on the parking. Well, I shouldn't say double check with you, it's a positive. I was at my Ventura office on Friday night, and, you know, after the bank, we're not there after 6 o'clock. And there were people parking in our parking lot and walking down a half a block to the new brewery on the corner. So I think that's a great idea, to be able to get that type of parking availability. That brewery, I'm not going to name names, they had their own parking lot completely blocked off because they had outdoor dining and a food truck. So you had to either park on the street or in our parking lot, which actually was very convenient. So I think that's a great idea, and we can, hopefully, we can allow that in a lot of these areas. So thanks.
Thank you, mayor.
Sorry, Lynn Lipster.
That's fine, thank you. I do have a series of questions to ask. And so if you can help me out with this. And I just want to start by saying I'm not opposed to microbreweries and tasting areas. I think they could be a wonderful asset to our community, and I love what Madera is doing. I think it's exciting what's coming. But I guess what's important to me is that we are consistent. And so I'm struggling with a few things, so maybe you can help me out. I want to make sure this isn't just a carve-out for a niche industry. So that's kind of where my questions are going to go. The Second Amendment, as I understand it, we currently limit production to five people in commercial areas and are asking to make an exception for that, for microbreweries. In other words, if they have one of these set up in a commercial area, they can have more than five employees. Is that, am I understanding that correctly with that amendment?
Yes.
Number two. Why would we do this for a microbrewery when we wouldn't do this? Let's say there's a pizza manufacturer that wants to have, manufactures pizzas that are frozen, sent out to places, but they want people to be able to sit down and eat it there as well. Why are we only doing this for microbreweries?
Quite frankly, council member, I think the rule on the commercial is outdated, and that ought to be addressed in a separate agenda item.
That's actually what I was going to also reference, too, that partially, as we're going through, doing all these amendments, we're doing amendments to the code to make it more in line with current standards. Because we were providing, we want to, we know how, we haven't had microbreweries in this city, so this is kind of the first step of getting there, and that's where we put that term in there. But that's a section that we are looking at revisiting to modify at a later date.
Okay, let me ask about amendment number three.
I want to clarify your question there. Are we saying that in a commercial area, that we're going to determine if they can or cannot have a microbrewery?
What I understand right now, in commercial areas, if there is an industrial component, they're manufacturing some kind of food, et cetera, and then selling it as well, they are limited right now to the number, so in other words, it's a way to keep production from taking over the whole commercial area. So they're limited to the number of people right now that can produce the food. That's the way the code currently reads, if I understand it correctly. I'm not a planner, but that's my understanding.
You're right, yes.
So what we're saying right now is, for microbreweries, it doesn't matter how many people you want to have. You can have more than, you can have six, seven, eight, nine, 10. But we're not allowing someone who, yet, until it gets changed, someone in the commercial area that wants to manufacture, let's say they make carrot juice, and they've got all the carrots and the juicers going on back there, or whatever. I guess maybe that's beverage, I should stick with food, right? Because beverage is kind of, let me stick with food. They're a bakery, and they send cookies to all around, but you can also buy cookies in front. Right now, they're limited in commercial areas to five people, by code. Now, whether or not they're abiding by that, I don't know, but that's what they're limited, correct?
That's correct, and I can tell you, in my years of working with the city, I don't think we've ever enforced that commercial rule, because we don't count employees. It's just not what the city does. So that's why I say it's an old, it's an old code section that needs to be revisited.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, yeah. My concern was, is that we were once again getting into the private contractual decision of the property owner versus the tenant. And I, we are not talking that.
I'm talking code.
I appreciate it, thank you.
So let me ask you about amendment number three. Basically, if I understand it correctly, in industrial area, currently, if someone has, it's not primary sales, but it's ancillary sales or something, it's limited to 20% gross, or sell, 20% of their sales can be retail or whatever. We're basically for breweries now, in an industrial setting, basically saying that it's unlimited, and they're not going to be constrained by that 20% rule, correct?
Correct.
And again, I'm struggling with this disparity of allowing this for one industry and not for others. So if I understand this correctly, let's go to the bakery, let's say, or the pizza maker, who has an industrial setting, I used to, as a teenager, worked for a company that made pizza bombs and sent them frozen out to everyone all over the region. Basically, if they're, everyone else is limited to 20% of their sales, if they're industrial. But we're saying specifically for this niche, it doesn't matter, they can make, is that correct? They can sell, they can basically brew, they're brew, and then 80% of the sales can be onsite. That would be accurate, correct?
Correct, because that's, this is the normal, this is kind of the day-to-day operation of a brewery or winery, where people come onsite, they do samplings, and then they purchase items. Where, let's say you have more of an industrial, where they're a baker, but they send them out. Usually, they're selling those items online, they're not, people are not coming onto the site to purchase it.
I understand, but that's, right now, they're limited. The way our code reads right now, a baker couldn't have a big, if they did all these cookies, they couldn't have a big restaurant and sell half of their, make all half of their money with people coming in. Because right now, we are limited, that we're, by code, saying they can't do it, 20% of sales, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I could tell you, the reason why this provision is in here is because if rent is cheaper in industrial.
And that's the other thing that makes it, yeah.
Residential, or retail.
Right.
And if we didn't have this requirement, our industrial areas would be full of retail sales. What this is allowing is someone that makes and sells out of the same location, but is.
But I feel like it's giving an unfair advantage.
The problem with a brewery is that they need specific size requirements for their equipment in order to go into their building. Most retail centers are not, they don't have clear height of 23 feet, where most of the manufacturing process for alcohol, and I can't say all, because I haven't been that many, but they need a lot of space. You're not going to get that space in a retail area. So I think there is a little bit of a difference there. Now, there are bakeries in our industrial areas. There's a couple of very successful ones, they're very busy. They could sell, they could, but they could sell 20% of their grocery receipts, could go out the door. Someone coming in buys a cake and goes out the door.
And you can go up to 40% with a conditional use permit.
Okay, and so there is the allowance of being able to do that.
Okay, so there's a CUP up to 40%, but what we're saying with this ordinance is unlimited. They can sell, they can be at 80, 90% of their sales, correct?
That's correct, but they would be out of business soon if that's, if they're depending upon everyone coming in the door to keep them in business. They're going to have to build, create it in bulk and sell it to other areas.
Okay. Okay, let me ask about amendment number six, if that's all right. This is where we are providing a new definition, which basically eliminates the 250-foot requirement. And I'm struggling with why we need to eliminate that requirement.
Page number is that on? I'm sorry, page number?
Page four, yeah.
So this, we're not eliminating that, that provision does not exist now, so we're not eliminating it. There may have been some confusion early on in neighborhood council that we were, because it's related to the drinking place.
I'm sorry, let me make sure I'm understanding you, Sean. You're saying the 250-foot distance is not being eliminated.
It is not being eliminated, it's.
Well, it's not applying to, it's not applying to this.
Right, I understand that, so it applies to everyone else. But in this, everyone else, excuse me, bars and taverns, let me be more specific, okay.
Correct, yeah.
That sell alcoholic beverages exclusively. But it's not going to apply to a brewery that sells alcoholic beverages exclusively.
That's correct. Because what you're, well, again, going back to, we worked with a brewer several years ago, and based upon this requirement, could not find a location in town that allowed his business to locate, because it was within 250 feet of almost everywhere in the commercial areas. This is before it existed in industrial. So it created a lot, a difficulty in trying to find somewhere for them to go. Opening up the industrial, most of the industrial areas are separated, are separated from the residential locations. Now, that being said, there are, I don't know if you can go ahead and bring it up. We did do a little bit of research on where are schools, where are churches, where are these locations? So you really need to look at the green areas that are in industrial. And we've identified what would be a hospital, a church, a park, a school, or whatever. It does eliminate quite a bit of area that you would be able to locate one of these facilities in, if you were to have that 250-foot requirement. But the 250-foot requirement was really there because we were having, at 2:00 AM, the bar closes, and we've got people going out into residential areas. I can.
But I also think it's you don't want a bar next to a school, kids walking home. I mean, I, yeah, I understand, there's.
Correct, yeah. And most of these breweries and wineries, they're not open till 4:00 anyway, or after hours, because they need shared parking in the industrial areas. So they've got to wait for some of these other businesses to start closing down, and if they're going to have shared parking arrangements with those businesses, where they're not impacted. So the hours of operation are going to be a little bit different.
And I understand that. I guess what I'm going back to is that, my questions are related to, is this fair to other industries? And are we just carving out a niche? And so that's, I just understand, that's what I'm struggling with. So I understand, okay.
Do you mind if I might add something to?
Sure, of course.
Also, ABC regulates these, the microbreweries and wineries on the amount that they can serve, because it's only for tasting, and it's only, it's limited to that type of product. They're also limited with their hours of operation, too. They have to, I believe, close by 10:00, if I remember offhand.
I understand, but when you say that limited, it's limited to what they can sell, not the quantity per se.
What they can serve per person, so they can only serve one person so many ounces per day.
Is it less than what a bar could serve of that, of one specific drink?
Yes.
Yes, tasting facilities have more specific ABC regulations.
And so I guess that comes, then, to the definition of a tasting facility. And I, because in my mind, drinking, tasting, it's the same thing, basically. If I'm not mistaken, maybe you're saying the quantity could be different, but it's still, I think in some ways, tasting sounds like we're trying to legitimize the activity. But, and I get it, you're, but my question is, with regards to, to how we define it, so what we have now, and let me give you some page numbers. Let's see, what is it, page 14. So 14, you see that we have, part four, we have the definitions of an alcoholic beverage manufacturing, drinking place, tasting facility. Basically, heretofore, they've been included in a drinking place, basically. And we're removing it from them, from that area, and putting it down into a tasting facility, correct?
Yes.
We're just giving it its own category, so that we now can change the 250 feet and all, et cetera, right?
Well, if I may explain a little bit more, the tasting facility is.
Well, if I may explain a little bit more, the tasting facility is meant for offsites sales of like you like, for example, you produce your wine or beer, what have you, but then you actually have a a place on another area that you can
I'm sorry, so it would be another open store, two doors down or or it not necessarily part of the operation. It's a separate operation where they
But it belongs to the one.
But it belongs
They can only sell that product.
Correct.
It's not like like a bar or anything. They can only sell the product that they produce, it's just not on the premises.
Gotcha, okay. And so I guess my question is, in the definitions, in the drinking places, you basically say they have to have type 40, type 42, type 48, basically the different licenses that ABC that you get that go with that. Yet there's nothing specified as our as the what the alcoholic beverage manufacturing or or testing facility is. There's no shouldn't there possibly shouldn't we identify exactly? I mean, shouldn't we say license 23 or license 75 for Brew Pub or 74, you know, 23 for small business man beer manufacturer? Shouldn't we specify that?
Again, this definition for drinking places is is older.
Sure.
At that time, it was more specified by the type of license. Now that there's more more different types of variety of different licenses that are out there, we want to make it regulated under ABC because they could change their license type or the definition where we'd have to come back and update the municipal code. So this just allows it allows it to the applicant would apply for the type of license that they would qualify for through ABC. ABC ABC would then notify the city. They have application in place. Do they have a permit on file? What is zoning? We regulate that, but they regulate how what type of license they're going to be pulling.
I understand, but if if I'm reading this correctly, for instance, license number one, and keep in mind, I lived next to Anheuser-Busch for 15, 20 years. So I I've lived next to a large brewery. I know what that's like. I know what it smells like. I mean, I I know that experience. Right now, if I understand it, if Anheuser-Busch came into our industrial space and they had and wanted to, I mean, technically, we couldn't exclude them if they fit if they fit a spot and only served their product, correct?
They could they could have a facility, a tasting facility.
They could have a tasting facility somewhere in town in one of the allowed zone areas for their product.
Doesn't that be like Pacific Beverage was?
Well, Pacific Beverage was a warehousing distribution. But conceivably, they I mean, if if Anheuser-Busch wanted to rent space in the town and having tasting facility for their beer, they sort of would base upon this, they could. And they would have to go to the ABC and get the appropriate license.
Okay.
I think the only difference is on the drinking places, we just have we didn't strike all the all the the suggested licenses. We can just strike that portion of it and then just say, go get your ABC license, whatever is applicable.
Yeah, that's what we have actually on page 13, part three, item F. It says, ABC license, alcoholic beverage manufacturing facilities offering the sale of alcoholic beverages shall obtain and thereafter maintain the appropriate license from the state of California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, ABC. In that way, we don't have to we don't have to come back and do cut amendments every time that they change the number so they get updated like Ms. Santos was saying. So that's that's where we are capturing any license that is required. They have to go to ABC. They have to go through that process.
I think the difference is on page 14 on D. If we just struck, does not include any adult entertainment businesses, includes those establishments required to obtain the state alcohol beverage control license, period.
Agreed. That's actually a better approach. I would recommend that.
That way, we're not we're not suggesting what license they could or could not get. It's really up to them, the applicant and ABC to determine the license. We weren't addressing the definition on bringing places other than to take out the ability to to brew. But we can certainly make that change.
Okay, we got others that want to speak. Let's go ahead and we'll come back to you if you're not finished.
Sure, of course.
I'd rather if you're calling on me, I'd rather finish your question.
Okay, okay. Or how about Councilmember Lou Evinos?
I don't have a question. I would like to make a comment when questions are over though.
Sure. Elaine, you're still
Well, I do, but I don't want to overstay my question time. But if I have a couple more minutes or a minute or two, that'd be great. I want to understand right now because we've got Mad Air, which I'm excited about that's that's coming in, it has a space and is I really hope they can open soon because I know it's been a struggle for them. And and that is exactly what we're talking about is a Mad Air kind of a place, correct? Is that accurate?
That's very similar.
Okay. And I understand, Brian, you shared that it was difficulty finding other places commercially that would satisfy. But are there other places for the that that currently exist where microbreweries could without having to go into our industrial area, for instance?
Yes, I mean, you can they can locate up at the in commercial zones with a conditional use permit. I can go back to that. There are other areas, but what's limiting is the amount of space that they need to have their equipment because they their equipment's quite tall or like like Mr. Gable was mentioning, sometimes they're up to 14 to 20 feet tall so that they have to do exterior modifications.
Sure.
That's one of the holdups that would happen with Mad Air is they didn't realize how low their entrance was to get the the equipment in, the brewing equipment in, so
So they're having to do exterior. What a pain for them, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, in addition to that, actually, council requested staff to look into allowing this type of facilities in industrial areas. So that's how this got started from council request.
And I appreciate that and I understand that. One of I I guess one of and this goes back to my concern about equity and making sure we're providing it for everyone. And Mr. Gable made the comment that is actually part of my concern. I spoke recently with someone who deals with industrial space. And my understanding is that in Simi Valley, it is very tight right now. In fact, this person was saying that she is able to charge prices and people will pay it because there are so many, particularly in industrial, small industrial, coming in. And so I guess my concern is doesn't this possibly give an unfair advantage for for a type of food product, making it cheaper for them? Well, and the other let me back it up too. You you mentioned that industrial space is cheaper than commercial space, and I know that to be the case.
That's correct.
The footage square footage price. And so I guess my concern is that we are favoring one type of food or production, allowing them to go into industrial. And I would understand it if we had oodles of industrial and we had plenty of space and openings, but with it being so tight, is this possibly maybe unfair advantage for this one type of food or beverage classification that we're creating?
I don't think so for a couple of reasons. One is because it is the are a manufacturer. I I'm not sure if manufacturing would be a compatible use in a shopping center or a non-industrial space. So the compatibility of the type of use, I think, is problematic. Yeah, space is tight. We are blessed with a very low vacancy rate. We're getting some new industrial space coming onboard. And but that's always going to be the the space is always the rent is always what the what someone's willing to pay for it. And that's that's just economics. But the I go back to you wouldn't be able to because of the demands of the space, if you're going to if you're going to lease a retail space for $3 a square foot and have a facility like this, half of your facility is going to be taken up by manufacturing equipment. And it's not it's not financially feasible to do that where you can let you can rent the exact same space at $1.25 a foot, and now it makes it financially feasible to operate the business.
Well, I'm not convinced it's not financially feasible. I mean, I understand that you're saying that because we're going to give them this advantage, but I can think I can think of some grocery baking grocery store with high clearance that if a brewery went in there that and and served in the front would be wonderful advantage, but I'm but I'm hearing you.
But they're not leasing they're not leasing 35,000 square feet to make beer. They're they're leasing 5,000.
Right, and there is some that are willing to divide that, but I but I hear you. I understand what you're saying. Okay, fair enough. But thank you for answering questions and I appreciate your I appreciate that you are doing what the council directed, so thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Judge.
Well, my only question is why this takes so long? We've been asking for this kind of an ordinance for the last 10 years that I've been on the council, at least. I constantly have people coming up to me when I go to, you know, events at breweries, wine vineyards out in other parts of the county, which, you know, a lot of a lot of places hold events there. And they ask, why isn't this available in Simi Valley? And I always have to look at it and say, I have no idea. Their industrial space is just as tight as ours. Their industrial space is just as expensive as ours. And they seem to be able to make it work. Several people from Simi Valley that live here have wineries and breweries in other cities, which is sad because they'd like to have their facilities here. Mad Air doesn't compare with what we're talking about here because Mad Air is going to be a huge brewery type restaurant on the same scale as BJ's, but not with the franchise. So these places aren't talking about having full-scale restaurants in their breweries, are they? Okay, so these places are just going to be making making beer. Yeah, food trucks and stuff like that. Good example of where this is is you look at a place like you point out Ennigrin over in Oxnard, I mean, Oxnard, Moore Park. You can look at a Four Bricks Winery in Ventura on the Oxnard border, and you can look at Magdivino in Oxnard. And, you know, two of those people that own those locations live here in Simi Valley. And we did have microbreweries in Simi Valley. They were both located in retail space. One was at where Chewy's West is now, and the other one was at the corner of Royal and Madera a long time ago. They both failed because they couldn't make a go of it in the retail space because there's an old adage in the microbrewing world is if you want to make a million dollars, start with two. So I'm looking forward to this ordinance.
Councilmember Lou Evinos.
I agree with Councilmember Judge. I have been waiting for this ordinance. I also want to know why it took so long. I can tell you that this adds a lot to communities. And I've seen it in other states. I've seen it up and down the state of California. We have the most microbreweries of any other state, including New York. But people go out of their way to go to these kinds of facilities specifically. Oh, gosh, I I know Councilmember Judge mentioned several of them. But people get excited when they hear about it. I talked to council members in the city of Azusa who are like, hey, did you hear about the new microbrewery that's coming? And, you know, people will travel like miles to go there, to go to that microbrewery, to have that experience. And it's not like a bar. You're paying, you know, $7, $8 for a glass of beer. You're, you know, paying $20 for little, you know, four little sips of beer. So these are people that are like, you know, beer connoisseurs, you know? They want to go taste that specific type of beer. And and in terms of the retail sales, like, you know, sometimes they're like, hey, you know, this was really good, but my husband couldn't come, but I'd like to get, you know, take, you know, take a growler or something, you know, home to him, a couple of cans of this beer so he can try it. So they're not it's not a liquor store. It's not a bar. It's a different experience. And they will have, you know, a lot of times they don't have their own food, but they'll invite a food truck. So then you're inviting other business, you know, owners to come and collaborate. I constantly hear from people, you know, from the ages of, you know, in their 20s, all the way into their 50s, saying, there's nothing open late here. You know, we want to go get a drink with our buddy. We want to go have a snack with our buddy. And people who don't drink, but they want to go hang out with their friends who do drink, they want to go hang out somewhere and everything here is closed by nine. You know, so this is the opportunity for us to take advantage of that industrial space at night. Again, the parking is an issue because where, you know, the ones that I've gone to, they they flip, you know, like like Councilmember Kavanaugh mentioned at night, you know, once the businesses are closed in that industrial area, then that's when the microbreweries open. They don't open until 5:00 or 6:00, you know, after everyone has left. So the parking is not an issue. And, you know, in terms of the experience there, it's a different experience. Their their main purpose is to manufacture the beer and then they will go and sell it, you know, to different local companies. And then, you know, from there, the the part that is them sailing selling or tasting the wine or the beer, that is just a small portion of what they're doing, of the of the business that they're doing. So their main purpose is not for the tasting, it's just the experience of it. And I've seen it, like I said, from Boston to Seattle to New York to, you know, to Vermont to Texas. And I think this is really going to help get us as a city in Ventura County aligned with the other region, regional facilities around us and the other cities around us that already have this kind of facility that people want and that they've been wanting. I remember going to San Luis Obispo and the ladies, you know, the Girl Scout Moms and I wanted to go to wine tasting. And it was in an industrial space and it was a tiny little space that where we they had six tables, literally. We had to wait 20 minutes so we could find a table for three. But I looked it up on my phone. I yelped it, you know, let's go to wine tasting. And so it's a destination. And this creates destinations in the city of Simi Valley, which will greatly benefit us as a city, benefit the the residents here, give you a place to go to, you know, like I said, hang out with your friends, a destination. And that's what we want in Simi Valley. We want to create more destinations for our residents and for visitors when they come. I will be introducing, hopefully, ordinance, the second option with the with the 50% gross floor area, the tasting area. But I want to give others the chance to give comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'll be quick. I agree with Councilmember Judge. I agree with Councilmember Lou Evinos. It's it's time we get with reality and the reality is this is an industry that is very much wanted and we're missing the boat by not paving the way to have them, whether it's on LA Avenue or in our industrial areas. And so I think it's time to quit talking and start acting. With that said, we also embrace the faith-based community in our industrial areas. And that works out, seems to be working quite well. And so why would we not embrace a industry that is striving to come here to our city, but we don't have the necessary facilities and we haven't made the necessary adjustments to our ordinance to allow them? So it's time to take action and quit talking. Okay.
I just wanted to make a quick comment also.
Sure.
I also agree with everything that's been said here. I'm very excited to have this come to our community. Like the other council members, I've had people ask about it and I've had to go out of town. Thousand Oaks has a few that I've been to, Moore Park, you know, and Ventura. So I'm very excited that we're going to give this opportunity to people here in Simi Valley to open these type of businesses and for our community to enjoy them. So thank you for all the work you guys did on this.
And Mayor, may I make one comment before the motion's made?
I'm sorry?
I just would love to make one comment before the motion's
Okay, your name's on the list. I was going to call on you.
Wonderful.
Would that be all right?
I would appreciate that.
Okay, how about if we hear from Elaine Lister?
I want to make it very clear that I do think microbreweries are would be and are and could be a wonderful addition to our community. I am not opposed in any way. My concern is that the same amenities or the same things that we offer for them in terms of number of employees and the percentage of sales, all of those things that these concessions that we're making for them, I feel like they should be made to to all food production. And so I that's my struggle with the way this is right now. And so just just to be very clear, that is why I likely will be voting no. I do think, though, that certainly this that this these are good additions to our community. I'm not questioning that. I just would would approach it slightly differently. And I want you to know, I did print out the guide of all, in fact, Councilmember Lou Evinos, or I printed out the guide of all the microbreweries in Ventura County, just so I would know. And so if you want to look at my list, there are, yes, I'm aware where they are and 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 that certainly that they are popular. So those are my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lou Evinos.
Before I make my motion, Mayor, I just want to let Councilmember Lister know that if she wants to make a 9B request for this to be looked into for food manufacturers, I'll gladly second it. I move to introduce ordinance number 1328.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
We did this last time. We want to make sure we have an opportunity for the public hearing.
Oh, yes.
No comments.
We don't have
Give me once, but not twice.
That was you that said it earlier. Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, we have no public speakers for this item either.
They're all out at microbreweries. They're in Thousand Oaks. They're in Thousand Oaks, yes.
We're missing it.
We're bringing it here, Mayor. Okay, Mayor, I move to introduce ordinance number 1328 approving zone text amendment.
I'm so sorry, let's go ahead and close that public hearing.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing portion, now I'm looking for a motion. And I think, uh, Councilmember Lou Evinos has the floor.
I'm ready, Mayor. I'm, I'm ready to, uh, make a motion, introduce ordinance number 1328 approving zone text amendment ZS 750 to amend portions of Title IX of the Simi Valley Municipal Code and Amendments to the West End Specific Plan SP-S-7 Amendment Number 29, SP-S-2021-0001, and the Brandeis Barting Institute Specific Plan SP-S-9 Amendment Number 7, SP-S-2021-0002, to modify regulations for operating alcoholic beverage manufacturing facilities, breweries, microbreweries, wineries and distilleries with a modified parking requirement to not require additional parking of the outdoor tasting eating area for alcoholic beverage manufacturing facilities does not exceed 50% of the gross floor area of the tasting area as amended.
Thank you, thank you, very good.
That's, that's cool, you got it out of, at a girl.
Yeah.
From the city attorney. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Okay, we have a motion, a second, call for the vote.
The motion passes with Councilmember Litzner voting no.
Thank you, uh, all of you that answered all the questions and tried keeping us up to date on what's going on. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next item on the agenda is Item 5, Public Statements. This is a time for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments and informational reports. All comments submitted by email have already been provided to the City Council, however, they will not be read by the City Clerk this evening. Our persons who register by 3:30 P.M. today will be called on to speak during this public statement's Item 5 for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any comments, we can begin Zoom statements. We do have four public, uh, speakers.
All right. My only comment is, thank you for waiting, and, uh, now speaking, uh, we do want to hear what you have to say. So, first speaker.
Suzanne, can you hear us?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council and staff. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Uh, my name is Suzanne Thewitt, and I've been a resident of Simi Valley for 27 years. I am speaking tonight as a grateful fiscal conservative. I know that running a city is like running a complex business. The city manager and the council run a good business. You know that, uh, hold on a second. You know that the most important person in your organization is your customer. You provide great services, uh, for your customers, uh, the citizens, by hiring extremely talented and professional people to deliver them. It is also important to maintain that professional staff by compensating fairly. Our current government has to be more sophisticated today and more agile in order to keep up with the technology and be able to keep the citizens safe. Our employees of Simi Valley are true professionals, and they deserve a competitive wage in the market, so we can keep them here. The three MOUs being brought before you today show a great deal of respect to both the employees and your customers. A reasonable increase with incentives is what the city and the negotiating teams came up with. Excuse me. That will ensure a continuation of services and a retention of talent. On behalf of your customers, thank you for your hard efforts of give and take that brings the MOUs to you today. I strongly support the city in approving these three labor items, 7A, B and C. It is good for the city, its constituents and the employees. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Gable. I assume you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh, hi. My name is Rocky Rhodes. I've been a resident of Simi Valley in the Bridle Path neighborhood for 11 years, and, um, I'll tell you that I've got a cold Ennigrin in the fridge waiting for me after this. I was reading Item 7B on tonight's agenda, and I have to admit, I had mixed feelings about this MOU. So many of us have been forced out of work for a period of time over the last 20 months, and some of us had no company to return to. And when I see the others getting pay increases, I frankly get a little bit jealous and upset when I know that the pay comes out of my, the taxpayer's pocket. However, when I dug into the MOU, I found my emotions changing. This is not some CEO bonus of inordinate amount of money. It's a few percent over a couple of years, and it's for our police employees. That is more of an adjustment than a raise, but it also contains a thank you component in there that I think is appropriate for these truly essential workers that help to keep calm and order in a truly unprecedented time. When others were told to stay home and avoid the virus, this police force needed to be directly in its path. I also decided to look at what other cities pay their police department employees and found that for our size of city and a force being wholly employed by the city, not contracted out, it put us right in the fiscally responsible range of being less paid than L.A. and Santa Monica, but fair for a city of our size. And I know that other jurisdictions end up with some of our talent because of the, uh, the pay differential, but those officers now have to work in L.A. or Santa Monica and not in our wonderful town. This MOU shows respect for the officers, a thank you for the hard work and sacrifice, and provides security for a couple of years for both employees and the city. I want to thank the POA, uh, recognizing that the city is having a difficult year, and they truly negotiated in good faith. I've heard of other police department negotiators that are not as responsible, and it leads to a very contentious and adversarial relationship, which is different than what we have in our community, and the police and our community are better for it. In the past year, we've heard asinine calls to defund the police. While this is a nonsensical proposition on its face, it still must be demoralizing for the department. To all those that think safety is free, get a condo in downtown Chicago and let me know how that goes. The chief and the entire department do exemplary work and negotiated fairly. Our city is a shining example of how it's supposed to be. Our City Council and City Manager know that a safe city is not dependent, uh, on the police by themselves and maintain supporting services with the money they saved in these responsible negotiations. I fully support the MOU of Item 7B and ask that you pass this great agreement. Thank you for your time and letting me speak tonight. It's Ennigrin time.
Hi, Evelyn, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council and staff. My name is Evelyn Gatewood, and I have been a resident of Simi Valley for 60 years. I'm speaking tonight on Items 7A, B and C. Anyone that has owned a business knows that negotiating employee contracts is one of the most complex, emotional and essential things that a business can do. The city is no different. Some look at the negotiation as a way to hang on to the most important employees and often at the expense of other employees. This breeds a toxic environment of employees asking why their employer values other higher than themselves. I noticed that the city managed to do a multi-employee group negotiation. Who does that? Aren't the police more important than clerks and secretaries, janitors and librarians? Well, if anyone answers anything other than no, they are not thinking in the brilliant way of the city negotiating teams are. The SEIU and POA and management designated employees are all getting the same deal. Talk about an enlightened approach. This could only work if there was mutual respect for the city and all of its employees. I want to applaud the negotiating teams for working together for the total good of Simi Valley. It is an honor to work in a city. This facility, sound and employee-centric, well done. There are a lot of companies out there that could learn more from your example. Thank you for your service to the city, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, Mo, can you hear us?
Uh, yeah, I can hear you guys.
Go ahead.
Uh, my name is Mosun Salim, and I am a, I've been a Simi Valley resident for, um, about 17 years now. And I would like to comment on Agenda Item 7B. And just, uh, provide some questions for consideration regarding the vote tonight. Um, and upon review of, um, uh, the previous, on September 13th, 2021, under Agenda Item 8B, entitled Consideration of Proposed Revisions to the Terms and Conditions of the Memorandum of Understanding with the Simi Valley POA. Um, the public was encouraged to review and provide input, and upon, um, review, um, there's a few questions that I would like to be addressed. Um, one is the one-time bump in pay of 2% on or after January 1, 2022, a percivable benefit which would increase pension costs. Second question, will the change in tax laws allow a POA member to cash out their annual leave upon their departure if they have not so designated in the prior December? Third question, currently an officer with 10 years of service receives 260 hours or the equivalent of 1.5 months every year for vacation, sick leave or to be cashed out. With the restrictions on the use of annual leave, why is it being increased an additional 26 hours per year? Uh, number four, what is the purpose of the annual leave purchase program and where is it found in other bargaining units or within other agencies in Ventura County? Since annual leave usage requires other officers to fill in for the shift, doesn't this contribute to additional overtime? Fifth question, the 2017 agreement, Article 9, mentioned the new general orders for the department. What progress has been made and is it available to the public? Uh, sixth question and final, in the council report of September 13th, 2021, it presents a number of $738,868.79 for additional costs within full year 2021, uh, full year 2020, 2021. Does this include the extra annual leave and overtime costs? That is all, I yield my time.
Thank you.
And that is all the speakers that we have.
Okay. Uh, comments from the, uh, council? Councilmember Lou Evinos?
Uh, I just want to thank, uh, all the residents who spoke. You're still available to give public comments even though we're not here physically in person, so I just want to encourage you to continue to give comments via Zoom for a closed session and open session, and thank you for those of you who, uh, responded. And I, I am very glad to see that, um, our residents are speaking out in terms of valuing all of our city employees equally, because I think that's, uh, that's how we feel, that we think that they should all be treated equally, they're all important, and they all do a wonderful job of providing excellent customer service to our residents. And, um, thank you for your comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, my comments, very much like, uh, Councilmember Lou Evinos, is thank you very much for speaking. I know it's a lot more difficult, uh, to do it virtually and, uh, figure everything out, but we certainly appreciate your comments and listen to what you have to say. So thanks for staying up and, and speaking tonight. Councilmember Litzner.
I was just gonna say, echo that and say thank you for staying online for three hours to have that opportunity to speak tonight. And so that's dedication, and we very much appreciate your participation. And I'm, I'm sure that some of the questions that were asked, um, there'll be some responses for that later. So, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 6, the Consent Calendar, and there are no resolutions for your consideration this evening.
Do we have any, uh, consent items that need to be pulled?
I just have a, uh, a quick question or comment, shall we say, on consent item number two.
Okay.
Shall I go ahead, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I just want to make sure that when, I, I know we're just receiving the funding, but I just want to make sure that whatever it is we spend this money, however it is that this money is spent, that we make sure that it's, uh, spent on making sure that we meet the new demand of the new post-COVID era that we're in, in terms of doing outreach and making sure that that money is spent to sustain the cultural arts centers, that the city does not have to continue to supplement the budget of the cultural arts center. I'd like it eventually to be independent. That's my only request. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
May I make a motion?
Sure.
I move to approve consent items one through three.
Second.
Motion and second, call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 7A, Approval of Memorandum of Agreement with the, with the Service Employees International Union, SEIU Local 721, and Adoption of a Resolution. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution Number 2021-37, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, amending and restating the memorandum of agreement between the City of Simi Valley and the Service Employees International Union Local 721, and rescinding Resolution Number 2019-44, all previous resolutions to the extent that they are in conflict here with. And Samantha Argabright is here for this presentation.
I am, just give me one moment, we're just getting our presentations pulled up. Well, good evening. The item before you is the adoption of the memorandum of agreement with the Service Employees International Union Local 721, or SEIU. This item was first presented to you on September 13th for the purpose of providing transparency, oh, too far away, thank you, transparency and soliciting public comment prior to final adoption. Now you can hear me, now I can hear me. Prior to the beginning of negotiations, the City Council provided policy goals to the city's negotiating team that included addressing salary increases, tax implications for the payout of annual leave, and balancing the timing of cost increases. Staff has been meeting with representatives from SEIU, and the proposed revisions to their MOA are before you for adoption this evening. Staff received, as to counsel, one comment from the president of SEIU via email, and then you heard the other comments this evening. Those are the only comments that have been received on the agreements. The agreement before you is for a two-year term that includes a 3.75% in salary increases over the next two years and a one-time 2% lump sum payment, which will apply to 249 full-time employees and 30 part-time employees. I will now briefly review the remaining points of the agreement on the screen. The city will maintain 80/20 medical cost sharing with SEIU. Members can accrue up to 120 hours of compensatory time, up from 100 hours in lieu of overtime. The boot allowance has been increased for eligible members from $170, $75 a year to $200 a year. Employees may roll over the eight-hour floating holiday benefit for one year. Cleanup time was increased for eligible members from 10 minutes to 15 minutes. Employees scheduled to work on a city Employees scheduled to work on a city-recognized holiday will no longer be required to make up additional hours from their own leave bank. Effective for calendar year two thousand twenty-two and ongoing, the cash out of annual leave will be further restricted to irrevocable elections made the prior December to be in compliance with the constructive receipt doctrine of the IRS. The Me Too clause was removed. We removed the streets traffic and stormed during maintenance sections from the Public Works Maintenance Division of those areas that were allowed to wear shorts due to safety concerns. We modified the MOA language, which provided clarification regarding employees' contributions to PERS. Uh, we deleted the reference to the Community Services Department as it had previously referenced transit, simplified the bereavement section, and SEIU's membership due deduction and related language was modified. So the two-year cost for the agreement is shown on the slide above. The cost to implement the MOA will be five hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars for the first year, of which two hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred and fifty dollars is for the one-time lump sum payment. The cost for the second year of the agreement is six hundred and ninety thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars for a total of one point two million over the two years. The PERS normal costs are included on page four for each fund immediately below the cost table. It is recommended that the city council adopt the MOA with SEIU as presented, and this concludes staff's presentation. Joe Shannon and I are available for questions.
Okay, questions to staff?
This is not for myself, but just for the public, because I did have someone ask me uh why the community services mention was removed.
Yes, I believe we addressed this last time, too. Um, the community services reference was removed because in the MOU or in the MOA, it was specifically in reference to the Transit Division. And Transit is now under Public Works, so it no longer made sense to include the reference to community services in that section.
Comments? Or a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to adopt the attached resolution number two zero two one dash three seven, approving the memorandum of understanding with general unit employees represented by the Service Employees International Union, Local seven twenty-one. As presented.
A second?
Okay, a motion and second. Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item seven B, approval of the memorandum of understanding with the Simi Valley Police Officers Association and adoption of a resolution. The resolution, the reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, amending the memorandum of understanding between the City of Simi Valley and the Simi Valley Police Officers Association, and rescinding resolution number twenty seventeen dash thirty-five and all previous resolutions to the extent that they are in conflict herewith. And Samantha Argabright will present this item as well.
The item before you is the adoption of the memorandum of understanding with the Simi Valley Police Officers Association, or POA. Prior to the beginning of negotiations, the city council provided policy goals to the city's negotiating team that included addressing salary increases, tax implications for the payout of annual leave, and balancing the timing of cost increases. Staff has been meeting with the representatives from the POA, and the proposed revisions to their MOU are before you tonight for adoption. Um, as you heard from the public speakers this evening, those were the comments that we have received since this was presented to you last time. This agreement is a two-year term that includes a three point seven five percent salary increase over the next two years and a one-time two percent lump sum payment and will impact a hundred and twenty employee positions. Now, the terms for the agreement include the semi-flex amount will be set at a hundred percent of the family level for the PORAC PPO for the term of the agreement. Effective for calendar year two thousand twenty-two and ongoing, the cash out of annual leave will be further restricted to irrevocable elections made the prior December to be in compliance with the constructive receipt doctrine of the IRS. Effective for the November twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, annual leave cash out only, police unit employees will have a one-time opportunity to cash out AL with no limit. Effective following adoption by the city council, annual leave accrual rates will be increased by approximately one hour for each tier of service as follows. Ten or more years of service will increase their accrual from ten hours to eleven hours per pay period. Five or more years of service will increase their accrual from eight hours to nine hours per pay period. And less than five years of service will increase their accrual from six point four six hours to seven and a half hours per pay period. We incorporated three side letters into the MOU. There is no Me Too clause. And the primary uniform for the police unit employees signed to the patrol bureau will be the five-eleven uniform with either the outer-wearing vest or the utility belt system. The cost of the agreement will be five hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, five hundred ninety-two seven forty-four in the first year, of which two hundred and seventeen thousand is a one-time cost, and six hundred and sixty-one thousand in the second year, for a total cost of about one point two million over the two years. The PERS normal cost is included on page three of the staff report immediately below the cost table. At this time, it is recommended that the city council adopt the memorandum of understanding with the Simi Valley Police Officers Association as presented. This concludes staff's report. Joe Shannon and I are available for questions.
Any questions or comments for staff?
Um, I'm willing to make a motion, but before we get there, um, I know I don't, you were not in the room when when public comments were being made, but there were some questions specific to this um, this item. Were you able to hear what those questions were? Do you have any comments?
I tried to jot them down. I couldn't write fast enough, though, so. Um, I will do my best. Um, so I know that Mr. Salim had asked some questions about um, related to the increase in annual leave for the police officers. Is that correct?
I I I tried to write down as many of the questions as I could.
I did, too.
So there was, let me see, let me see if I can cover some of these.
Okay.
The the one-time payment is not a pensionable cost.
Correct.
So that's uh, the cash out benefit is uh when employees cash out, when they separate from the city, that is not pensionable either. Um, but it is, they're able to cash out uh whatever they've accumulated at at separation. Um, why is there an additional twenty-six hours? It was a request from the the POA to add one more hour that they were able to accrue um as a result of this negotiation.
And that's correct. And if I may add, um, our police officers typically work ten-hour shifts, so that's about two and a half days for them.
Right. Why, Angel, I think the question is why are we allowing AL purchase? Um, I didn't get a lot of detail on that question.
Uh, the question was, what is the purpose of the annual leave purchase program? And then the follow-up question to that was, doesn't that contradict overtime?
Oh, for annual leave cash out? I did, okay. Yeah, I was trying to keep up with that. So um, annual leave cash out is a um, is a benefit that the city provides to all of its employees. Um, there are some public agencies that do not offer annual leave cash outs. However, um, the city has provided that for as long as I am aware. Um, and in, it depends on the circumstance um, in which someone is taking time off. But if someone is just cashing out AL, um, that would not create additional overtime. If someone is taking time off and they need to cover a shift, then that potentially could create some overtime need.
Can you just clarify, because I just want to make sure that the resident's question is answered. Does that, you said AL cash out is offered to all city employees. Does that mean salaried or hourly?
Um, that all of our city employees.
Okay, so they all have that option.
Yeah, and I do want to clarify, annual leave um is, our employees don't get vacation pay or uh, any other time off, sick pay, thank you. It's all one. It is, if you're gonna be off for a day, you're using annual leave. So, except for bereavement where
SEIU.
SEIU does have bereavement leave. Uh, the other units don't. And I think, uh, chief, there was a question of whether the new general orders are in place. I believe that is the case. Yes. So for the public that may not have heard, uh, it is that we have adopted Lexipol, and it is on our website, and it's available for the public to uh to review. And I
And I I think I have one more of the questions.
Yeah, the last question is whether uh the the budget had estimated, had included an estimate for the this out, the out year. I know Mr. Tony can go into more detail on that, but the 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 budget did anticipate um, was it, did, well, why don't you go ahead, Joe?
Yeah, for uh this fiscal year, we'd be absorbing the costs in our anticipated salary savings. So we'll absorb the costs this year and budget next year. Didn't, we didn't necessarily budget for AL specifically in the budget, but that would be captured in our total costs.
And we did in uh
Oh, and the, I'm sorry, Brian, but the uh, in in our projection in the budget, we were anticipating an inflationary uh amounts. We were budgeting about a three percent growth uh in the future year. So we're right on target with that, with these negotiations. So we would expect to still have um a balanced budget into the future.
I don't want to speak out of turn. Can I just ask for a clarification on that? Thank you. The so the the question was, I just want to clarify, um, that the seven, uh, the the cost of the annual leave cash out was not included in this one point two million dollar cost?
We budgeted for that separately.
Okay, so, um, and that's based on, Mr. Tony, you're saying that the costs are absorbed in salary savings, so are those unfilled positions?
Uh, council member Levenos, let me clarify. For our estimating purposes for this agreement, uh, we did uh estimate what those costs would be. In our actual adopted budget, we didn't specifically call out um these costs uh that we were negotiating. We didn't anticipate what the contracts would be because we adopted the budget ahead of time. Um, but we are anticipating that we'll be able to absorb the costs uh for this fiscal year with our salary savings.
What do you mean by, can you just clarify for the public what you mean by salary savings? Are those, again, are those unfilled positions or why is there salary savings?
Correct. So we budget at a fully loaded amount, so we anticipate, we have to budget accordingly in case we are uh fully staffed. Um, we have not quite been fully staffed yet this year, and of course, we have retirements and attrition, um, so there will still be salary savings.
Okay, and so if, let's just, I I just want to clarify, because I know there there's gonna be these questions. I want to make sure they're answered now. If we did, um, is there an intention to fill those positions or there there's an intention to leave them?
So we we are never fully staffed, so let me as as a starting point, we we are never at a hundred percent fully staffed. Um, we have separations happening weekly. Uh, we will, um, all positions that, when they're refilled, have to be approved by our office, my office. Um, and I do, we will hold back some positions for a certain period of time in order to guarantee some salary savings. Um, and as we go through separations, I ask each department to reevaluate the need for that position. So oftentimes, we will, we we have, we have downgraded positions. We will hold positions for a longer period of time to see if the need is is still there. And sometimes we have eliminated positions. So we are in a constant reevaluation of staffing um on a regular basis.
One, uh, let me confirm with you. Part of it is, uh, let's say a a member, an employee, is off on uh industrial leave. And even though it's known that that employee may be medically retired in the future, you cannot replace that employee until that employee is off the books. Am I correct on that?
That's correct.
Okay, and so that, that's why we run at a deficit on the total numbers of employees. We're we're never gonna be full, because there always seems to be somebody that's out there that's waiting for a final decision on their retirement.
Uh, that is just one piece of it. That is correct.
Okay.
I'm aware, I just wanted to make sure the public knew, because those are questions that are asked, what, that's terminology that's specific to municipal, you know, governance that not everyone is familiar with. So thank you all for answering those questions. I appreciate it. Would you like a motion, Mayor?
Sure.
I move that we adopt the attached resolution number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-eight, page five, approving revisions to the current memorandum of understanding with the Simi Valley Police Officers Association employees.
Second.
Here we have a motion and second, uh, call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, next on the agenda is item seven C, adoption of a resolution revising the terms and conditions of employment for management designated employees. The reading of the resolution is as follows. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley, establishing terms and conditions of employment for management designated employees, and repealing resolution number twenty twenty dash forty-six and previous resolutions to the extent that they are in conflict herewith. And Samantha Argabright will present this item as well.
The item before you is the adoption of the resolution revising employee benefits for management designated employees. You last considered this item during the September thirteenth meeting. City's employees are divided into the following four groups for labor relations purposes. General unit employees, police unit employees, police management employees, and management designated employees. Management designated employees are not represented by an employee organization. While management designated employees are not formally represented, staff meets with representatives from each department to better understand interests of employees and to share the city's financial forecasts as we did with each formal bargaining unit. Prior to the beginning of negotiations, the city council provided policy goals to the city's negotiating team that included addressing salary increases, tax tax implications for the payout of annual leave, and balancing the timing of cost increases. Staff has been meeting with representatives from management, and the proposed revisions to their resolution that detail employee benefits is before you for adoption. Um, and again, the same comments were received this evening, and those have been the only comments received on this particular resolution. The resolution before you is for a two-year term that includes a three point seven five percent salary increase over the next two years and a one-time two percent lump sum payment and will apply to a hundred and forty-four employees. In addition to the terms noted above, employees scheduled to work on a city-recognized holiday will no longer be required to make up additional hours from their own leave bank. Effective for calendar year two thousand twenty-two and ongoing, the cash out of annual leave will be further restricted to irrevocable elections made the prior December to be in compliance with the constructive receipt doctrine of the IRS. Effective for the November twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, annual leave cash out, management employees will have a one-time opportunity to cash out hours in excess of the two hundred and thirty-five hour cap. For the two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three health plan years, the city's Simi Flex benefit will continue the eighty-twenty cost sharing with employees for medical premium cost increases. The cost to implement the resolution will be six hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars for the first year, of which three hundred and fifty thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars is for the one-time lump sum payment. The cost for the second year is eight hundred and twenty-one thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars for a total of approximately one point four million dollars over the two years. The normal PERS costs for each fund are outlined in your staff report on page three immediately below the cost table. As part of state law, government code five four nine five three dash C three requires that the city council orally report in open session a summary of the salary, salary schedules, and compensation in the form of benefits for local agency executives before the council can take final action on such an item. Local agency executives are defined as the chief executive officer, a deputy, or assistant executive officer, department head, or a person employed pursuant to an employment agreement. Therefore, should the council move to adopt this item, the motion includes an oral report which will need to be read in its entirety by the council member who makes the motion. A revised motion for the item has been placed at each council member's space to correspond with the supplemental staff report for this item that was distributed earlier. This concludes staff's presentation. Joe Shannon and I are available for questions.
Questions? Counselor, I want to make you a council member Kavanaugh yet. I I apologize.
That works. I'm fine with that. I'd be, I just wanted to make a quick comment and thank the negotiating team. We had a deputy city manager, Samantha Agabright, director of adminis- administration, Joe Tony, management analyst Shannon Nash, Jennifer Gutierrez, deputy HR, and Sonia Hauer, Assistant City Attorney. I think I got all the titles right. Okay, but thank you all for all this work. I I know it was a lot of time and effort and you you all did a great job, so thank you.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna make a comment before we get started, and it it applies to all three categories. I think what we witnessed tonight was government working very well. We up here, I I view us as the representatives of the people of the city. And as representatives, each council member here took hard questions to the city manager and to Mr. Tony and to Samantha. And the transparency that has come out of the city since the city manager, Brian Gabler, became city manager, I think has added to this one-city atmosphere that we're seeing here tonight. All bargaining units worked together smoothly and made agreements that was best for the city. And uh, I think staff was looking out for what's best for the city. And I know that all the council And I know that all the council members, you could tell by the, the many, many meetings and all the questions on budget, and different benefits that were going to go to our employees. And I think it's that transparency because the bargaining units could see what was going on in the city. They could see the books. They could contact the city manager and get direct questions. And if the city manager didn't think he covered it well, he turned it over to Mr. Tony. But I think that, that whole body, the entire city government, worked in such a transparent manner. And this council, each council member represented their people out there, and it, it worked. It's amazing. I think, I think the city deserves a gold star for the, the job that it did during these negotiations, and I certainly hope to see this continue in the future. And thank you, staff. This has just been a very good experience. And hopefully, the employees that work so hard, and we have great employees out there. And like I said, you, you go out to the guys working on the streets, and there's not a whole, there's not five or six people leaning on a shovel and one guy working. They all work. They all work. And hopefully, they're as proud of the city as I am. So thank you.
May I make a motion?
Certainly.
I move to adopt resolution number 2021-39, approving revisions to the terms and conditions of employment for management designated employees.
Okay, and then Elaine wants to speak?
No, actually, you, I don't need to speak. I was going to make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But DeeDee, I think you need to, I think you need to keep reading the whole thing. So it's all, it's all yours.
I didn't want to leave you out.
No, I was just going to motion.
All right, so we have a motion?
No, I have to complete, read the oral report.
Have a good time.
Thank you. Okay. In accordance with government code section 3511 dot one, a summary of these benefits for the various positions identified below is reported as follows. For the positions of Assistant City Manager, Deputy City Manager Nonconfidential, City Clerk, Chief of Police, Public Works Director, Environmental Services Director, and Community Services Director, revisions to pay ranges and compensation unless specified under individual contracts, annual leave cash out restrictions, and holiday pay are as follows. Effective as soon as adopted and configured, a 2% cost of living adjustment that includes adjustments to pay ranges will be implemented. Effective with the paycheck after the 2% cost of living adjustment, each employee will receive a 2% one-time payment equal to their annual-based salary. Effective with the first pay period on or after July 1, 2022, a 1.75% cost of living adjustment that includes adjustments to pay ranges will be implemented. Effective with the November 12, 2021, annual cash leave out, excuse me, annual leave cash out, employees will have a one-time opportunity to cash out hours in excess of the 235-hour cap from their accrued annual leave bank. Effective for future annual leave cash outs into 2022 and beyond, the cash out will be further restricted to irrevocable elections made the prior December for only time earned during the cash out year while retaining the maximum number of hours available to cash out at 235 hours. Effective after adoption and as soon as systems are configured, holidays will be paid according to employee schedules instead of a straight eight-hour benefit. If the employee's normal day off falls on a city-recognized holiday, then the holiday will be reserved as an eight-hour benefit for later use. All other prior benefit levels remain the same.
Do we have, I'll second. How's that?
Do it.
So we have a motion and second. Call for the vote.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, there are no items this evening under Agenda Item Eight, New Business. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is Item 9A, City Council Member Reports.
Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Levenos.
I don't have much to report. It's been a busy, busy couple of weeks going back to school and getting adjusted to that. There was a youth council meeting on September 21st. I wasn't able to attend due to conflict, and the boys got celebrated their anniversary on Saturday, September 25th. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend that as well. My mom had surgery, so that's my report, Mayor.
That's fine. Thank you. Councilmember Littner.
Thank you. On Tuesday, September 14th, I attended the Economic Development Committee sponsored by the Chamber. It was there that I heard some of the figures about our industrial rates and, and the, how, what demand there is right now, and that they are all-time highs. It's, it's just an unusual circumstance our, our community is in. It's particularly in the industrial realm, but I'm, I know we're building, and that will help in the future. On Wednesday, September 15th, I attended the Simi Valley Arts Commission meeting. There were several things I wanted to share that came out of that. Our Simi Valley Arts Foundation has raised this year $4,200 in donations so far, and my commendation to them, and it did do that during COVID when it's difficult to be raising funds. Additionally, we discussed the additional grant from the Shutter Venus Grant. I know that was part of our consent calendar. That's an additional $116,350.45. What I wanted to point out to be clear that was also discussed is that that additional grant is actually makes it easier for us to access all the funds because basically it pushes the date that the funds have to be used back to June 30th of 2022. So it makes it easier for us to access the entire grant. And so I'm excited that we have all of those funds plus the $200,000-plus that, that Cultural Arts Commission has. The third thing that it came out that I wanted to mention too is that an ad hoc committee was formed. Basically, it was a COVID-19 rental rate recovery grant program. And the committee that was formed would investigate establishing a special rent, rental rate or grant program to encourage artists and arts organizations to return to the CEC as part of COVID-19 recovery. And so that ad hoc committee will be specifically looking at that and finding ways that we can shore up and make whole our, our arts community that has been so impacted by COVID. On Thursday, September 16th, I attended Neighborhood Council Number Three where I am the liaison. Heard an excellent report on emergency preparedness, what the city is doing. On Friday, September 17th, I attended the PPP drive-through that was, wait, PPE, I gotta use the right acronym, excuse me, Personal Protective Equipment Drive-Thru, that was fun, that was supported in part by the Chamber with other partners and hosts of volunteers. And so I want to thank all the volunteers that were part of that. Also included the hospital that was giving out vaccinations, et cetera. But it was a very successful event, and thank you for the, for those that participated. On following week, on Monday, September 20th, Mayor Protem Kavanaugh and myself interviewed applicants for Neighborhood Councils One and Three, and they were, they were all outstanding. I think, I think DeeDee will say that any one could have stepped up. We were just sorry that we had to limit it to a few numbers, but it really some outstanding people in our community who are willing to serve. And just thank you to all those who are willing to do that. On Tuesday, September 21st, I did attend the Youth Council meeting that was held at the Cultural Arts Center, and was just excited by their enthusiasm, all that they're doing. And you heard from them earlier, this evening. On Wednesday, September 22nd, I briefly stopped into the Wellness Expo that was held outside. I swear it was, they picked the hottest day of the last two or three months. I don't know. It just was, but bless their hearts. They were out there and providing wonderful information. One of the things that did come out of that was that almost all of the entities were looking for employees, including in the hospital. So it was, there is a need for, if you are available to work, trust me, there is a need in our, there's a need in our community. On Thursday, September 23rd, appreciated visiting with, with our city manager, Brian Gabler, and also appreciated attending the Sar Optimus fundraiser where they do so many good things for our community. And I was impressed with the participation of both Councilmember Mike Judge and Mayor Protem DeeDee Kavanaugh, who both were intricately involved in, in helping to make that a successful event. On Friday, September 24th, I interviewed, I did AHA Commissioner interviews with Councilmember Mike Judge. And again, there were many outstanding applicants who wanted to serve and help with our area housing authority, and pleased with what we came for, but really some outstanding people. And so I guess what I learned this last two weeks is that our community is filled with wonderful people desiring to make a difference and who are making a difference. And that concludes my report.
Councilmember Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On, I did want to touch on something that I missed last time on our last report. On Monday, September 13th, I attended the Council on Aging meeting in the afternoon before our first council meeting that day. And I just wanted to say, the Council on Aging are the folks that run the senior center. They've done a great job throughout this pandemic by keeping it up and when it, you know, has been open to the public now for a couple of weeks, I think. And they have new furniture over there and new stuff going on, and that was all provided by the Council on Aging. So I want people to go over there. If you haven't been to the senior center in a while, go back and check it out. Friday, September 17th, we've been having a lot of ad hoc committee meetings with VCTC because we're trying to choose a new general manager for VCTC. And so we had to put together, get together with the headhunters and put together the pamphlets, kind of like we're doing for the city, city attorney spot here. So that's been taking up a lot of our time at VCTC. On Tuesday, September 21st, I met with our city, city manager, Brian Gabler, who told me the city's doing great, and he's overworked. On Thursday, September 23rd, I had a great time being a bartender for the Sar Optimus here in Simi Valley. The Little Black Dress Event raises money for all kinds of causes that they, they put on in the, in the champion. And I can't say enough about Sherri Schultz putting that event on. It was great. It always is every year I go. And I was so happy to see all the women there, especially my wife. She was able to get dressed up, and I always enjoy seeing that. On Friday, September 24th, Councilmember Littner was very, very underspoken on that. We had 16 applicants for two spots. That was a tough job, picking two people for the housing, for the AHA Commissioner interviews. I think we did a good job. I think you'll be happy with the results. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Wednesday, September 15th, I, excuse me, I led off the Community Mental Health Virtual Forum that the city put on. We had some great participants in that. Adventist Health, Kaiser, County of Ventura Behavioral Health did a really great presentation on everything that is offered. They had a lot of things I didn't even realize they were offered. There were other community groups there also sharing what they can do and what they offer to our community. It was a great first start. I think it's something we will probably continue to do and get more and more community involvement in it. I think it was something, I think it's something a lot of community members will appreciate if they can get to become a part of it and learn some of the information that's out there. So looking forward to that. And it's on our website. It's recorded. That's true. So check it out. It was really, really a lot of great information. On Friday, September 17th, I had a Zoom call with Sarah King with, it's a cat rescue, and I, I mess it up every time, Kingdom. And Simi Valley Missing Pet was supposed to join me. They reached out to me because I had done the report on the Ventura County Animal Shelters regarding the trap neuter and release. So they would like to get some assistance from the city possibly here in Simi Valley. Sarah does trapping on her, on her own. We do have a mobile clinic that comes out and does spay and neuter. So it's, it's just something she wanted to see if we can get a little bit more involved here. The county currently is down to one veterinarian, so they've kind of put a little bit of a limit on the availability on that. So I told her we would get with her and work with her and see what can be done. On September 16th, I skipped it. I did have the EDC Economic Development Collaborative General Board Meeting. Again, please check out their website. There are still multiple lending opportunities, multiple grants, multiple seminars, webinars that are free. The grants and the loans aren't free, but, well, the grants are free. Sorry, the loans aren't free. But there's a lot of information out there. On Monday, September 20th, I, like Councilmember Littner said, we did interviews. We, I think we interviewed about 20 people overall. I think somewhere along those lines. And like Councilmember Littner said, they were all great. I mean, everyone that interviewed had an interest in this community, wanted to become a part of it, wanted to become involved, wanted to learn more. It was very difficult to, to choose just four and four for each of the, the two districts. But I encourage anyone to just please sign up again and keep interviewing. I know Emily Habib keeps your existing application on file for the next round. So she'll contact you and ask if you're still interested. And just please keep interested. It was very, it was a very heartwarming interviews for me to see all these people who care about their community and, and want to, to make it a better place. On Wednesday, September 22nd, I attended the WINS luncheon, Women in Networking, and I was the speaker there. I was able to tell them a lot of what was going on here in Simi Valley. They were very appreciative, and I told them to get involved with Neighborhood Council. So that was one of the key things. And I think our Neighborhood Councils are one of our, the biggest unsung accommodation we have here for our community. So it's, it's something I think we all as council members are pushing and constantly mentioning. And then I also attended the Little Black Dress, along with Councilmember Littner and Councilmember Judge. They do put on a great thing. The Sar Optimus raises money, and all the money they raise goes back to the women in our community. So they have Sar Optimus Clubs, you know, throughout the, the country. But everything raised here, especially by the Little Black Dress, which is their major fundraiser, goes back to women that apply for their grants. And I've met some of those women. I've talked with them, and it's very heartwarming to hear their stories and how, how much these grants to them mean and how much it betters their life. Excuse me. Today, I received an email from a local high school student regarding a group of local high school students who have a food bank who would like to speak with me about possible grants. And I told them I would get with Deputy City Manager Samantha Agabright, and we would get in touch with them. I guess they've already spoken with her. So that is the end of my report.
Thank you. My report's pretty short. I was out of town for the first week and few days. I would like to talk about an event that's coming that I'm involved in, and I'm sure many of you will be or already are. But it's, I, I call it Toys for Tots, but it's this toy collection and distribution that'll take place here in Simi Valley on December 11th. And the folks that are involved in it is the Town Center Mall, the Rotary Club, the Nighttime Club, or Evening Club, whatever they call it. Huh? Sunset. That's kind of like Evening. And the Police Explorer Foundation, the Ventura County Fire Department, that cowboy singer, Justin Honsinger, I think he's the chair of it. And what's exciting is, is for the kids that don't have a wonderful Christmas in our city. And the difference is going to be a little bit is we're going to collect as many toys as we possibly can and get as much involvement. And not that we, I want to ignore anybody from any other cities, but we kind of want to spoil the kids in our city that, that have not the greatest Christmases, and we want to make it a great Christmas for them. So if we have this over abundance of toys, instead of every child getting one toy, if we can get every child to get five toys and make a bigger Christmas, that's our intention. So listen, it'll be coming out right away. And if you want to get involved, contact me or contact Justin Honsinger. He'll sing for you, and then he'll get you involved, and we can collect a lot of toys for the kids that are maybe not having the greatest Christmas. Let's help them have a great Christmas. That's pretty much it. I've had a lot of small meetings with folks, different businesses and what have you, but that's, that's the biggie that I see coming. And with that, we will move on to 9B, call for any future agenda items.
Mayor, I have one.
Mayor, I have one request.
Yes.
And I'm just going to give very small context, but I know that the Neighborhood Councils have three unexcused absences provision for removal, but City Council does not. And I've been asked by residents how we can hold our Neighborhood Council members to a higher standard than City Council officers. So, I would like us to consider having a discussion about council members who are absent for more than three unexcused absences be removed from office or that there's some sort of censure to make sure we remember what we're here for, that we're elected and we're here to represent the residents.
Is there, I actually have a question with our attorney. Is there something on the, in our books or in our code that has some type of guidance right now for the council?
We've checked very thoroughly. There's nothing within the municipal code. We couldn't find any resolution that expressly identifies the three unexcused absent rule for a city council member, for sitting, sitting city council member.
And so, and I just want to understand, you are asking Councilmember Levanos unexcused, not just absent, but that it's unexcused. In other words, they just didn't show up and forgot to tell somebody?
Yes.
Correct?
I'm just asking for us as city council members to be held to the same standard as Neighborhood Council members. That's what I'm asking.
We can't discuss it, can we?
No, you cannot, but as.
We need a second though.
Right. I do just want to clarify that provision you're talking about applies to the executive board members of the Neighborhood Council.
Yes. And, and just, I mean, I don't have a problem if we want to agendize or discuss it. I mean, I, I don't, I don't see that ever being an issue because whenever someone's not here, it's an excuse reason, but if.
So, are you seconding it?
So, I guess I will.
I'm sorry?
That's a good question. Am I seconding it? Do I think it's necessary? I don't, but I'm willing to, but I'm willing to second it for discussion purposes. I don't think it's necessary because of our elected status.
So, we do have a second.
Okay.
Okay.
I do have a couple of things, Mayor.
Okay.
If that's all right. I received, I'd like to request the city write a letter to Golden State demanding that for water conservation measurement, they should use 2019 levels as their base point. And just to give you a little context, I had a conversation with a business owner who was closed because of COVID or his, his, basically during 2020. He has businesses that were closed such as hair, et cetera, salons, et cetera. And so, the water usage was very low. And now, he's being told that that's his baseline to determine what water usage he could use for 2021. And that I have the Golden State letter which basically says, all customers will have their baseline established using the 2020 usage data. All usage in excess of the customer's allocation will be charged at the regular rate plus a drought emergency surcharge. In other words, they are being penalized twice. Once for COVID and now that that's been used as their baseline and if they use water or don't conserve below that amount, they're going to be penalized a second time.
I'll second that.
And so, I would like, and this obviously, if you were at home residential, probably was a good thing that 2020 was your level, but for some of our businesses, 2020 is not a fair level.
If I can suggest, we have on our next agenda, October 11, there is a discussion on water. We can get into a deeper discussion on this particular issue if you'd like.
It'd be part of the.
That would be fine. And this is, and this obviously our discussion, I assume the water discussion will apply to our own water.
That's correct.
Department. This is specific to Golden State.
Correct. But you may want, you can have a deeper discussion during that item.
Great.
About that topic. And then we can, we more than, you more than happy to take that motion.
To take it, okay. To generate, great.
Okay.
Great.
Sounds good.
And a couple of just follow-ups that came out of the microbrewery discussion. And I just, I do think the equity fairness is good. And I know that they're doing this, they say, but should we revisit the code that requires no more than five when food production is performed in commercial spaces?
We're going to bring, we're going to review that.
Okay. And then the other thing I'd like.
And I can tell you, we're not even, we're not even monitoring it.
Okay. Okay. And the other thing I'd like to, like to, again, just for equity, if we're not going to, maybe change it to 40% of retail and industrial, if we're loving, if everyone else is limited at 20% and microbreweries, in terms of, I'm not being very articulate right now. If all other industrial companies that have a secondary process of selling things on the side are limited to 20% of their gross sales and we've opened it up for microbreweries that they can be, there's no limit, I think that there ought to be a standard that is fair. And so, I would suggest possibly 40% that applies to all and including microbreweries.
So, that, what you're asking for is a new agenda item on that.
Correct. On that particular, on looking at specifically industri.
So, ask for a new agenda item and let's stop there. We don't want to continue the discussion from earlier.
Of course. I'm just trying to explain the context.
Okay. So, anybody want to second that motion?
I will second that motion.
Okay. So, there you go. It's on the agenda.
So, let me just clarify. You want to raise the 20% limit to 40%?
I'd like to make it consistent across everyone in industrial area. And so, that's my thought is 40%. Maybe there's a better 30%, but that would be the discussion. In my mind, 40% seems fair, but I don't. But it would, but you're right. I would, it would, because I want microbreweries to truly be producing.
I think we have to stop discussing it.
Agreed.
I would concur.
I think it's time.
Agreed.
It's on the agenda. We'll leave it there.
Fair enough.
Next up is German adjournment. Wow. We made it. Now, does it, does anybody have a discussion on adjournment? Okay. We'll move forward. Tonight, unfortunately, we have to adjourn in memory of two individuals. One, a fellow council member in Fillmore, and that's Ari Larson. And then also, we're going to close in memory of a gentleman named Carol Hoines. I, my guess is most of you don't know Carol. Carol was a longtime Simi Valley resident and became a firefighter. In fact, he and I were in the same rookie class in 1975. And Carol served this community for many, many years. I'm thinking about 30 years till he retired and he moved up to Oregon and I just got word today that he has passed away. And Carol was very active in the community and through the fire department and was a great guy and a fine firefighter. And we'll also close in his memory. With that, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.